It's like we were all here. So let the record reflect, we have reconvened virtually with all members present. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag.
Like.
United States of America.
To the republic for which it stands.
Under God.
Nation.
God.
Indivisible, indivisible, for liberty and justice.
Justice for all.
Like to take a moment to remember a couple of Madison residents who lost over the past two weeks. Phyllis Frank, lifelong Madison resident, passed away on Friday, January 21st. She was 79. She was survived by her husband, York. Two sons and a sister. She was born in Markstown, December 5th, 1942, grew up with her sister on South Street, and was one of the first graduating classes from the Ben New Madison High School. She had a long career as administrative assistant in New England Financial near, in Greenbrook. Greenbrook was also a lifelong prisoner of St. Vincent Martyr Church. Also, I remember Frank Iannarone Jr., known as Big Frank, died on January 18th, age of 83. Frank is the father of Frank Iannarone III, the owner of Madison Pharmacy, and obviously a very active leader with a Chamber of Commerce, and serves on our Alliance Addressing Substance Abuse Committee. In addition to his son Frank, he survived by his wife of 62 years, Elizabeth, a daughter, and the spouses of the children, along with a sister and a brother. He also leaves behind five grandchildren. Let us take a moment to remember Phyllis Frank and Frank Iannarone, and let us also remember New York Police Officer Jason Rivera, who was killed in the line of duty this past weekend. Now let us pass our thoughts on the families or friends they leave behind, and let us also send our thoughts and prayers to NYPD Officer Wilbert Mora as he fights for his life from the gunshot wounds in that terrible event, as they were trying to protect those in the line of duty. Thank you. And we have a motion for the reorganization minutes of January 3rd, 2022.
So moved. Second.
Any corrections or comments? I did note that the dates will be corrected on the header on pages 2 through 16, but everything else looks good. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. And a motion for the executive minutes of January 10th, 2022.
So moved.
Second.
Any, we've already discussed that, executive law in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. And the motion for the rigor minutes of January 10th, 2022.
So moved.
Second.
All right. Any discussion, corrections? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. I am back in the council chambers. We have figured out connectivity that caused me to freeze last time. Only kidding. Sorry. We are, we are a lot. I appreciate Michael fixing it, so I at least won't freeze tonight until my drive home. I did want to share an email I received today that a clerk may be noting in correspondence, but it's a reminder of why I have one of the best jobs in the world. This was, Dear Mayor Connolly, hope you're doing well and keeping safe. Aside from the wonderful job you're doing for the town of Madison, I wanted to thank you for marrying me and my now-husband seven years ago on this day at our home. We still relish the celebration every year and remember you. Seven years later, we are now blessed with two amazing and smart kids. We moved to Martinville in 2019 for our extended family and still stay in touch with the happenings of Madison, one of the best towns we have ever been a part of. Thank you again, and to your team for the great work in keeping Madison safe and welcoming. And thank you again for helping us on our wonderful adventures. That is, you know, you can imagine some of the other emails we make that, but that makes it all, all worth it. It was a very fun ceremony to do. And one last thing is, as far as February meetings, and it appears that the, for New Jersey, the Omicron variant spread is, may have peaked, but as has been pointed out by Dr. Fauci today or yesterday, doesn't expect it to peak until mid-February overall. So we will continue through February with a virtual format. It's not only, hopefully will get us to a better spot in pandemic, but also get us through the worst, hopefully, of winter, so that you can attend meetings in the comfort of your own home. So hopefully, we'll be in person, I won't be in the council chambers all by myself. And now we move on to reports for committees, utilities, Council President Landrigan.
Thank you, Mayor. From the Electric Department, on Saturday, January 15th, at 10:30 p.m., the standby crew was called to Drew University for partial power failure due to a blow-off fuse. The electrical department removed and stored all of the holiday wreaths that decorated the Victoria land post in town. The department also took down the tree in the center of town. They removed, wound up, and stored the colored lights for next year. The department also cut up and shipped the tree, saving a nice section for the toados to make a commemorative bench. The department is also very busy with emergency markouts, new construction services, and converting streetlights to LED fixtures. In between our line of work, the department has been working on cleaning and maintaining their equipment, chainsaws, pole trailers, underground trailers, and pumps, generators, and all of the battery tools. From the Water Department, the Water Department responded to numerous frozen pipes in consumers inside their homes. They asked that residents remember to close vents and insulate drafts into the basement to prevent water line ruptures and water damage to their homes. The Water Department also urges you to please stay off the ice at the skating rink unless a flag is raised to signify the ice is ready. They also remind residents to refrain from throwing debris on the ice. Personally, I've been reading about this on Facebook. It's, to me, it's a disgrace that this ice is becoming a place where people like to throw branches and garbage. This skating rink is unique to Madison, and all residents should do their best to take care of it. The department also installed a few, a new fire hydrant at the corner of John Avenue and Station Road, and the water, as the water main ruptured due to a hydrant. Radio-readable water meters are still being installed regularly. Anyone interested in having their meter changed to the automated reading system should call the Water Department to schedule an appointment. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. And I just also want to reinforce the, it was nice to have the tree for an extended season. Great to hear that it's being given another life as a memory of Carmen. And if you haven't noticed, they left the white light by suggestion of one of our shop owners. The white lights have remained on the light posts, just giving a nice little spirit to downtown. And now we move on to public safety. Ms. Byrne.
Thank you, Mayor. For tonight's council meeting, on Sunday morning, January 9th, there was a tragic fire in an apartment building in New York City, resulting in 19 deaths and many injuries. The cause of the fire was determined to be an electric space heater in one of the apartments. Many of the injuries were due to the rapid spread of deadly smoke throughout the building. The rapid spread of smoke was found to be caused by interior doors being left open and/or propped open. On January 19th, members of the Madison Fire Department visited the senior citizens of the Rexford Tucker Apartments on Chateau Theatre to discuss safe living habits, as well as the use of electric space heaters as supplemental heating and the risks of doing so. The talk was well-received. The Fire Department has also been busy responding to burst water pipes and structures due to extremely cold temperatures we've been experiencing. Residents who go away on vacation should not turn their heat off or down to low during the frigid days of the winter. And if you have outside water factor faucets that are not of the frost-free type, be sure to turn them off from inside of your home. Water damage can sometimes be as bad or worse than the Fire Department, than fire damage. From the Police Department, the Madison School District, in conjunction with our Police Department, went live with the R S V P three program. R S V P three, which stands for Responsible School Violence Prevention Preparation Protection, was founded by Sheriff James Dannon in collaboration with the Morris County Chiefs of Police. R S V P dash three is a multidisciplinary approach to identifying, evaluating, and responding to threats to schools and other institutions. All NPD officers and dispatches were recently trained on the program. Madison Police have reinstated the DARE program, and certified DARE officers will begin teaching their classes in all fifth grade classes in our public schools and in St. Vincent's. DARE stands for Drug Abuse Resistance Education, and is a prevention program to equip students with knowledge about drug abuse and peer pressure. The Police Department looks forward to getting officers back in the schools and having them be that familiar face for our Madison youth. The DARE program is coordinated through Sergeant Bart Glab and our Community Relations Unit. Tonight, we are purchasing new body cameras and dashboard cameras to support the Madison Police Department. These will keep our police safe and also our residents safe. And finally, we are appointing a number of promotions in the Police Department as of February 1st. John Misha, Chief, Joe Longo, Campan, Greg Perelli, Lieutenant, and Sean Plumstead, Lieutenant. Congratulations to all. Thank you.
Thank you. And now, Community Affairs, Mr. Hoover.
Thank you, Mayor. At the DDC Annual Reorganization Meeting held on January 20th, the Commission elected the following officers for the year 2022. Susie Whitehorn as Chair, Deb Stocker as Vice Chair, Peter Tashima as Treasurer, Melanie Tomaszewski as Secretary, and John Morris, Member-at-Large. If you have not already renewed your commuter resident, residential tenant, or merchant-employee parking permit for 2022, please email parking@rosenet.org as soon as possible to complete the process. We have been informed by the organizing committee that The Taste of Madison will be rescheduled for Monday, April 25th, at the Brook Lake 20 Country Club. That's Monday, April 25th. The Chamber is planning a Cinco de Mayo event for Thursday, January, May 5th, excuse me, Thursday, May 5th. This will be a shopping-dining event. More information will follow. And the Director of the Arts and Events, John Petrowski, is working on final scheduling of the installation of the calling ceiling lights grid at the Madison Community Arts Center. The project should be completed by the end of February. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. As my binder just fell, sorry about that. Finance and Borough Clerk, Ms. Cohen.
Thank you, Mayor. From the Tax Collector's Office, don't forget that first quarter property taxes are due on February 1st in just a couple of days. Hartley Dodge is open, but because of the pandemic, property owners are encouraged to mail their payment or use the online portal that can be found on rosenet.org. We've done multiple financial presentations over the last few months, but tonight we start the budget process in earnest. The evening will, this evening, we will hear about the financial performance of our water and electricity, electric unit. I can't talk, utility, I apologize. We will also hear from the Electric Utility Superintendent Jim Matina and the Public Works Director Ken O'Brien. We are blessed to have excellent, reliable, and safe electric and water services in Madison. Tonight, you will hear about what steps our utility and engineering staff are taking to maintain and improve our distribution systems. Finally, I want to say that voting on the budget is one of the most important actions that the council takes. Our utilities billed over $24.7 million in 2021. I think, Jim, is that right?
Yeah, yes.
Our single largest budget line in the entire budget document is the procurement of electricity, which we buy and then distribute to our residents and businesses. We work hard as a governing body to be transparent and to make information available to all residents. Tonight is the first of the four scheduled budget presentations. February 14th, we will discuss the municipal budget. February 28th, we will hear from the various department heads. March 14th, we will discuss the budget again and review strategic planning guidelines. On March 28th, we'll have one final discussion, along with the introduction of the official state budget document. We take a four-week break, according to state statutes, so that all residents have the opportunity to review the budget document. Then on April 25th, we are scheduled to have a hearing and vote to adopt the budget. All budget information is available on the annual budget process page on Rosenet, and those dates towards the end are subject to our state review. Thank you.
Thank you. Public Works and Engineering, Ms. Ehrlich.
Thank you, Mayor. The Borough Engineer reports that appropriation ordinances 1 and 2, which are on the agenda tonight, are being heard to allow road improvement contracts to be advertised in February, with construction anticipated to start in summer months, and that in the meantime, the department is finalizing road improvement bid documents, plans, and specs this week for road improvements in the borough. An update on Hartley Dodge Memorial Plaza. The borough continues to maintain a secure perimeter around the worksite until it is 100% complete. Major items of work have been advanced for the plaza restoration. Inspections, contracts, and quality reviews are underway by borough staff, the project architect and engineer. And as the work is inspected and completed, unfortunately, some winter weather delays may also affect opening the site. In the meantime, it's good to know that progress is underway, as we all read in Madison Eagle last week, and hopefully, the plaza will be reopened soon. The Department of Public Works has an exciting announcement that I know many residents will be thrilled to hear. The borough will begin accepting styrofoam recycling on Tuesday, February 1st. So starting next Tuesday, residents can drop off clean styrofoam with no tape, glue, or cardboard at the recycling center during the normal collection hours. No styrofoam peanuts can be accepted. It's really important that the styrofoam be clean and that the quality of the materials received is maintained, because anything that cannot be accepted at the drop-off, residents will be asked to take back with them and will be rejected from the recycling center in Springfield. The DPW will receive the clean styrofoam, pack it in bags, and then drive it to the vendor in Springfield, where each bag will be inspected. There is no fee to the borough for recycling the styrofoam, and in fact, we hope to net some savings in the long run by diverting styrofoam from the landfill and reducing our tipping fees. This is something that a lot of residents have been asking about recently, and I want to thank Ken O'Brien for hearing those requests and coordinating with the vendor to make recycling pickup possible once again in the borough. Our public works staff spent time maintaining the Memorial Park skating pond last week. They do check on it every day. Please check Rosenet to see whether the pond is open for skating on a day-to-day basis, and please take care to maintain the rink in a clean and good state of repair. And to echo my colleague's words, I think everyone suffers when a few people don't take care to take care of our rink, which really is the jewel of Madison's wintertime sports. So please, everyone, do your best to educate your neighbors and everyone you see at the rink to keep the rink clean and clear. We've had one snow event, and the borough salt supply is still very good. And the department is looking at purchasing an electric snow throw to be used at Hartley Dodge Plaza. Public Works met with a shared service committee of six towns to study ways to better work together as a group and hopefully see savings in tax dollars. And finally, DPW is done picking up Christmas trees at the curb. Trees can still be brought to the recycling center for drop-off, and the hours are posted on Rosenet. I want to give an update from Shade Tree, which has been very busy in the last month. Shade Tree Management Board had their reorganization meeting last week. I want to thank Gene Krakovia for once again accepting the nomination to chair the board for 2022. The 2021 Shade Tree Annual Report was delivered by the borough's arborist. And the great thing is, now that we have an arborist in two years of data from our tree protection ordinance, we have really actionable data about tree loss and removal in Madison that we never had before. The finding from the report is that the majority of trees lost in the borough are considered dead, dying, or hazardous trees on private property. These trees are not currently required to be replaced under the tree protection ordinance. So an area of particular concern is how can we do a better job meeting the challenge of replacing those trees, which we now know represent the bulk of tree loss and the bulk of land, meaning private land in the borough where new trees can be planted? As you may have seen in the recent Madison Eagle cover story, Mr. Krakovia made an excellent Shade Tree report to the zoning board on January 13th, highlighting the board's efforts to preserve and enhance the borough's canopy trees. And I want to just commend Gene Krakovia and Joe Santoro, the Chair of the Zoning Board of Adjustments for their partnership and their commitment to exploring land uses and issues in Madison and how our zoning and tree protection ordinances can work together to better preserve our tree canopy. I mention all of this also in light of the borough's recent climate action initiative. I want to note as part of the Shade Tree update that mature hardwood canopy trees are a really important part of climate action. Our forests sequester carbon in the trees and the soil, and they help manage and reinfiltrate stormwater into our aquifer. So I want to thank the Shade Tree Management Board and the Friends of Madison's Shade Trees for their continuing endeavors to preserve and protect our urban forests, and I want to underscore the importance of this work. That's all for Public Works.
Very much. And looking forward to that styrofoam recycling. Saving it up. And health, Mr. Range.
Thank you, Mayor. As I've previously mentioned, it is still pet licensing season. So renewal applications were sent out in December. Renewals must be submitted by February 1st to avoid any late fees. If you added a dog or cat to your household in 2021 and haven't yet gotten a pet license, now is the time to apply. If you have already applied for your pet license for 2022, you can expect to receive your tags in early February. Secondly, another license renewal, this time for Madison food establishments. Those renewal applications were also sent out recently, and they are also due February 1st to avoid late fees. Now on to some COVID-19 updates. As the mayor alluded to, our region continues to be impacted by the COVID-19 surge fueled by the highly transmissible Omicron variant. However, it does seem as though case and hospitalization rates both peaked likely about the second week in January. And their good news is they're falling about as fast as they went up. The Morris County case rate is down by 67% since January 10th, but still remains about 400% higher than the case rate around Thanksgiving time. So we've seen a marked improvement since the holidays, but you know, it's still definitely a concern. These trends are positive. However, it'll likely be at least another three to four weeks to return to those pre-Thanksgiving case rates. Given the continued high case rate in Madison, the Madison Health Department continues to encourage all residents to continue to do their part by getting vaccinated and staying up to date on booster doses as you are eligible, wearing a well-fitted mask when visiting businesses or other public venues, regardless of your vaccination status, and staying home and getting tested for COVID-19 if you don't feel well. And on the topic of COVID-19 testing, there have been a couple of updates there. Morris County is operating a testing site at the County College of Morris in Randolph. New Jersey continues to offer PCR test kits by mail or by FedEx. So you can go to covid19 nj.gov to order a test kit there. At-home rapid antigen testing is also more accessible and more affordable as private insurers are now required to reimburse folks for $12 per test for up to eight tests a month. And you can check with your specific insurance plan for details of how they'll be working that out. And lastly, residents can order up to four rapid antigen tests through a new federal program at no charge by visiting covidtests.gov. Remember, you can visit rosenet.org for updates on New Jersey's COVID-19 vaccination program, testing, and other pandemic guidance. And one last thing that is not health-related, but hopefully the mayor will indulge me here for a minute. I hope everyone has had a chance to see the new Madison flag flying the last couple of weeks on the pole outside of Hartley Dodge Memorial. The flag was adopted by the Borough Council in 2019, and it's been used in a limited way since, but now is proudly flying every day. Folks can also expect to see the new flag pop up in other places as well. I'd like to personally thank the volunteers of Marketing and Economic Development Committee of the Downtown Development Commission and others who worked on the design as part of their work on the overall identity refresh, including Mr. Hoover and the mayor. It is really great to see the flag finally flying in its rightful place in the center of town. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. And now on to communications and petitions.
Yes, Mayor. Received an email today from Sunday and Daniel Lutz, addressed to the mayor on the seventh anniversary of their wedding day, mayor mentioned before.
All right. Thank you. And now we're on to invitation for public comment, and this is one that is limited to our agenda items or our resolutions. So our agenda items for tonight is a summary of the State of the Schools address that Superintendent Mark Torres presented to the Board of Ed and the community through that forum. We, as mentioned already, budget hearing related to electric utility, water utility, and public works, and then also medical cannabis. And then these are the following resolutions you may comment on. Resolution 48 authorizing body-worn cameras, accessories to the cooperative pricing, and this is funded through, this is $81,520, funded through a grant from the state of New Jersey, and this is replacing cameras that we already have, and will be providing cloud storage. Resolution 49 is awarding a contract to Boulder Engineering for professional landscape architectural services related to design for Waverly Place. And to be clear, this is, they have not been given marketing orders. They will, their one marketing order right now is to get input from the community as to what the needs may be for Waverly Place. Resolution 50 is awarding contract to Richard Olowitz or as our municipal arborist. But that, resolution 51 is approving renewal of a bowling alley license to strikes. Resolution 52 is a amusement device license and permits for strikes. Resolution 53 is a shared service agreement with Borough of Chatham and the City Summit for IT services, and this is a renewal of an ongoing service that we've been providing. Resolution 54 is approving a proven special event permit to allow the use of Memorial Park Parking Area by the adult school at Madison and Flora and Park, and that's on February 23rd. Resolution 55 is authorizing allocation to the New Jersey, an application to New Jersey Clean Energy Program Community Energy Planning Grant Program. Resolution 56 is authorizing the appointment of Acting Police Chief Don Mitchell to the position of Chief of Police. We are looking, it's great 10 months, and we're looking forward to many great years. And this is a salary of $170,000 effective February 1st, but the salary is retroactive January 1st. Resolution 57 is appointing Acting Captain Joe Longo to the position of Captain, same dates and a salary of 153. Resolution 58 is appointing Acting Lieutenant Craig Perelli to a position of Lieutenant, same, effective same dates, and the salary is determined by Superior Officers' Collective Bargain Agreement of $140,965. Resolution 59 is appointing Acting Lieutenant Sean Plumstead to the position of Lieutenant, same dates, and the Collective Bargain Agreement salary of $140,965. Resolution 60 is authorized acceptance of New Jersey Historic Trust Fund Grant for the restoration of Madison Sonic Lodge, and this is the amount of $488,000. Resolution 61 is authorized a good grief in ink to hold a 5K run at Grolde Farms on Sunday, June 5th. If you may comment on those resolutions or the three agenda discussions. If you want to comment on those things, please click on the hand or star nine if you're on the phone. And when you're recognized, state your name, you're at the town of your residence, and the agenda item you're commenting on. And as always, try to keep your comments to three minutes, but we will give you a grace period of one minute and stop you at four. Anyone wish to comment on those items? And seeing none, I close this part of the meeting. Okay. And we move on to our State of the Schools address, the summary of the presentation that Superintendent made to the Board of Education. And before I hand it off, I want to note that January is School Board Recognition Month. And I did see Steve Bendel has joined us today. So I want to thank Steve and all of the school board members for their dedication of making sure we have the top school system in the state. And Mark, welcome.
Mayor Connolly, thank you so much. Can everyone hear me okay?
We're good.
So welcome. Thank you, Mayor. Thanks for having me here. I just want to say thank you to Board members, Range, Cohen, Hoover, Ehrlich, Byrne, and Landrigan. Thank you so much for being, for having me here tonight. It's a little weird to say we're here is because I'm up in Sparta right now, and I'm used to coming to visit you over at Hartley Dodge. Unfortunately, we can't be together, but I'm grateful for the opportunity to be here with all of you. So I want to say hi to Mr. Jacoby. Always always a pleasure. And of course, Mr. Cody, Mr. Burnett, I want to thank all the Borough Administration for their great cooperation and helping us to to operate our schools in some pretty challenging times, weather related, COVID related, all kinds of things. So thank you all for that. And if I may, I'd love to just give a quick congratulations to Chief Misha, Captain Longo and Lieutenant Pirelli and Plumstead for their appointments. I'm here tonight with a with a with quite the assignment, which is to cover the state of the schools address in about fifteen minutes, leaving five minutes for questions and answers. So that is not going to be possible. So what I'm going to do instead is walk everyone through some of the resources that are on our website, provide a few few updates, and then I'm going to just give a quick overview of the state of the schools address, which is fifty plus slides. And just try to highlight for you kind of how to read the presentation and what some of the takeaways are. And I want to make sure that you're aware of how to access the PDF and also how you might yourself have an opportunity to watch the watch the actual recording of the actual address that was given back in November. So at this time, if it's all right, I will share my screen. It looks like I might be able to do that. See. Okay, can you all see my screen with the district webpage? Great, thank you very much. So if you're not familiar with our website, you can almost navigate to everything through this simple menu button here. If you're interested in schools, you can click on school and you can access whatever you whichever school you want. You'll also note that our website is translatable. You can also see down here my Dodger updates, which I gave one over the weekend. Just kind of gives biweekly updates somewhat biweekly, somewhere around thereabouts, depending on what the amount of information there is to share regarding what's going on in the schools. And then we have our events listed here as well. Through the menu bar, we have tried to make this basically a one, like a two click kind of process. But I want to focus on this district overview because we've tried to make a few resources that are of interest to the public readily available. So first and foremost, if you're interested in seeing some of the good things that are going on in the schools each month for the preparation for the Board of Education meeting, we publish the overview of recent successes called the education updates. So you can see the historic updates here, and if you click on January eighteenth, you'll see that we have a variety of updates, obviously focused very much on Martin Luther King Jr. But we highlight our students and we highlight our teachers. So if you're interested in just kind of getting a snapshot as to the things that have been going on, that's a great place to do it. I know that our school facilities have been, and I want to actually, I didn't thank our fire department too. And I think before because our fire department's been responding to some pipe issues and some just some with some cantankerous old systems that we need to be replacing. So we're looking at coming up with a comprehensive long range facility plan. We've done some work on this already. I know that some members of our community are interested in this process. So you can see our resources here from last year. And then the coming months, we're going to resume this conversation with some of our education specifications and some follow up research that we've done after we did this initial work. The state of the schools addresses are all listed here. So if you're interested in seeing the historic addresses, you can sort of see how they've evolved over time. But the twenty twenty-one address really encompasses the data from the prior year. So if you watch the video here or read the PDF, that will take care, that will satisfy your needs there. And then a couple of the things I wanted to point out, first of all, we do want to make it clear that we do have some variety of ways that students outside of Madison can attend Madison, particularly as tuition students, we do have some room for enrollment. And where we do, we always encourage students, we have several tuition students from other towns who are interested in attending Madison Public Schools and are willing to pay tuition, which is competitive with private schools. If you're interested in other things in the news, we created a little tab here to cover that. And you were recently, I believe we heard in a report, Mrs. Burne, we talked about the RSVP three anonymous reporting, we have a tab here, and we're going to be doing additional training for our staff on this as well. But everyone should know that we've been sending the message over the last couple of months since we had that that sort of national school shooting scare on social media that this system is available and anyone who is wants to be able to report anonymously can use this. However, we do recommend that anything urgent or any imminent, any true real immediate dangers be of course reported through nine one one with no hesitation. But if you're not sure about what you're seeing or you think there's maybe a potential safety issue, but it's not necessarily immediately urgent, and you'd like it to be anonymous, this is a viable option. If you click here, you can access the whole the platform by clicking it right here. So you can see this, I'm sorry, this is the information, excuse me, a little quickly there. Oh, it has the information, excuse me, about the app. So it is an app that has to be downloaded. So I would recommend that everyone go ahead and take a take a second to download that app if they're so interested. So if we go ahead and move to the state of the schools address, as I said before, this is a rather large address. I would like to present in using this mode because I can show the slides kind of on the side here. Is this, can everyone read this? Is this small? Is this large enough? All right. So for starters, of course, we always want to thank everyone. Our schools are a community effort. We could try to do things on our own, but if we don't have the support of our students, our faculty, our parents and our community, then we're going to be of limited, we're going to be able to contribute in a limited fashion. Our mission statement has been in place since before I've come here. We've looked at this several times, and this is continues to be a guiding set of principles. Really that we want our students to be lifelong learners, that we want all students to be lifelong learners and polished with empowered with the knowledge, skills and character to shape their future, realize their dreams and contribute positively to the world. Over these years, through the state of the schools addresses and working with our faculty, we've articulated some district goals. These are the ones that have been in place. They're actually stated as goals. We have some targets along with these, and if you use the link that's on the website, you can see what those targets are. They're multi-year targets. And we realized as we were compiling the information for the state of the schools address that we've actually already begun to hit some of those multi-year targets, which is great news. And of course, we're going to need to recalibrate some of those targets. But for now, the two primary goals related to students are promoting high levels of achievement for all students and empowering every child. So this is basically our focus on a high, a strong academic culture with high academic achievement for all students of all backgrounds and recognizing that students need to be appropriately supported and nurtured to be able to be successful. So the two are interrelated and we recognize that. And that's why we have robust mental health and emotional development programs that are age appropriate and aligned with our academic endeavors. And then, of course, we have an ongoing effort to model operational responsibility for those of you who've been here for who've been in the know with respect to the schools for a lot of years, there have been concerns prior to my arrival and some carrying over into my arrival about just just the way the district had been running. I've taken, I take a great deal of pride in what we've been able to accomplish and making sure that our district operates with transparency, fiscal responsibility and appropriate governance. So kind of a spoiler alert for the takeaway, we put for the for the state of the schools address, we put the key takeaways up front. And the first is that we have, as most of you probably know, our schools have remained open throughout the entirety of the pandemic, except for the emergency closure period that was mandated by the state. We opened immediately, although albeit on a hybrid schedule, but we very quickly were among the first schools in our area to shift toward, well, in the state really, to shift toward more full operation. So by the end of the year, the twenty twenty-one school year, we had, we were, we were almost in full days across our school district. So keeping the students in school seems to have had an impact. And when we measure student growth, it would appear as though our students have have seen something close to a year's worth of growth, and in some cases more than a year's worth of growth. The district is making progress and enclosing the enclosing the opportunity gap is also clear. I want to disambiguate the idea of an opportunity gap and an achievement gap. We know, and it's long been known that that some of the inequalities in society do produce inequitable outcomes for certain traditionally underserved groups. So we know that that's evident everywhere, not just Madison. So but the way to address that is not to just focus on the achievement gap. Rather, it's also the importance to focus on the opportunity gap, which means when students interface with our schools, we want to know, we want to see in our metrics that when we look at the experience that students are having and the growth that students are experiencing while they're in our schools, we want to make sure that there are no disparities based on the individual demographic groups that students are in, meaning that's traditionally underserved groups such as black students, Hispanic students, economically disadvantaged students, special education students. We want to see evidence that students are experiencing our schools very similarly and growing similarly what in our schools. Because we can't necessarily just snap our fingers and have a student who has learning gaps or who is not at grade level and just in a year or maybe even two, get them to a place where they're fully thriving at their grade level. We're working toward that, but we need an incremental measure in the meantime to know that we are giving our students all fair opportunity and maybe even a beyond fair opportunity, doing a little bit more for the students who struggle the most. And we do have some evidence of that, and I'll highlight some of that for you tonight. And then finally, because we know it's a topic of public concern, we do seek to help the public understand the complicated rating systems that are out there. You know, we all, everyone, of course, in Madison wants to have just the absolute best school system that they can have. And we know that many people in our modern society rely on third party, particularly media rankings, to try to understand what sets apart one school from another. Now, these rankings are of varying value and have somewhat limited and definitively limited value. But nevertheless, they do draw from some important data points, and they're not without merit. However, there are some complications to interpreting them, so we seek to provide some context. And one of the pieces that is important to note is that because of the pandemic, a lot of the publicly available performance data for students has been suppressed. Also, some of it's also just a timing issue. So the civil rights data collection, which you see here is a five year collection. So every five years, this data is taken by the federal government, and we report out on it, and then that goes into a federal database, publicly available database. And it includes information such as matters like chronic absenteeism and suspension. And this data from this, the most recent civil rights data collection is from the twenty seventeen eighteen school year. That particular school year was my first year here, and we know that there were some anomalies in the data reporting and some of the rates of suspension and chronic absenteeism were particularly high, higher than will be reported this year. We're actually conducting our doing our reporting at this time. So I'm sorry, that would put it on a four year cycle, on a five year cycle. We're doing our reporting at this time, and we can say with confidence that our figures are going to be reflect better on the district. We suspension has, we've produced suspension dramatically and chronic absenteeism has also gone down. Also, our NJSLA scores are from twenty nineteen. So we have done quite a bit to make improvements in the student experience and in our and in our instructional capacity and our data collection and progress monitoring and intervention systems. And so the data that we're looking at now is still lags two years back. So these, it does not reflect the the recent innovations that we have had in school. So we do anticipate that some of these rankings will change. To be clear, there is some data of recent, for example, SAT data and AP data is recent, and some of our local assessment data is recent. So I've already been speaking for a pretty good amount of time here. So at this point, I'm just going to kind of give you the overview of what slides you might want to take a look at. We start by giving a demographic breakdown, and we highlight some of the recognitions. We've gotten quite a few recognitions, pretty notably Tori J Sabatini School was recognized by with a pretty prestigious award by United States Department of Education as a blue ribbon school. Our district has been identified by the College Board as on the AP honor roll. This we won this award for having increased perform increased participation in AP in AP courses by students who are traditionally underrepresented in those courses while maintaining or improving our scores. And then, of course, we have a few other items here too. I don't have to read them all to you. When you go down to academics and assessment, we talk about some of the data sources that we have. Start Strong replaced NJSLA this year. That's a whole other conversation which we went over at our last board meeting, which I don't need to bore you all with here. But I would encourage everyone to take a look at the STAR test, which is in, which is a local assessment, which the students take multiple times a year. It's a relatively quick assessment. It's not meant to be super precise. It's meant to be more precise the more you take it. And so as a result of that, we have data going from one year to the next. And our goal here was not to, we want to have this data to look at individual students' performances. But more importantly, from a district perspective, we can use this data to gauge what learning growth was. So from this data, we get something called the grade level equivalency. And so we can look at the grade level equivalency change from one year to the next. So in the fall of twenty twenty, to the fall of twenty twenty-one, we took, we gave the same assessment in math and in language arts. And we broke this down by subgroup here. You'll notice that typically we look at many government reporting of of racial groups is often not broken out by economic status. And we found that we have relatively small groups. So we found it helpful where we have to recognize that we have an overrepresentation of economically disadvantaged students within our subgroups. And of course, we're concerned about the fact we want, we want to have confidence that students, regardless of their racial background or their identity, would be experiencing school comparably. And so we wanted to look, compare our non, all of our non economically disadvantaged students by race. And when we did that, it was really interesting because we saw that in math, every, this is the, this is the one year growth line. Every group appeared to have approximately one year of growth or more. And interestingly, students who reported multiple race racial categories had the highest growth and our black and our white students had the second highest growth, second and third highest growth. But all of them were over one year. And then in economically disadvantaged, of course, this is, we know there are many reasons why students who would be enrolled in the free and reduced lunch program, which is how we identify these students, would have a variety of different disadvantages that would impact them from life, impact their education. So we're always trying to close this gap, but even here, economically disadvantaged students in math seems to in aggregate have more than one year of growth. We did the same thing for English Language Arts. We saw that across the board by race, non economically disadvantaged, everyone was about approximately one year growth. I want to bear in mind, this is a, this is a median score, which is why it kind of falls on clean numbers here as opposed to being a mean score. And then we also have our economic, again, we had some disparity here, and this was less encouraging, obviously, our economically disadvantaged students coming falling a little bit under a year's worth of growth in English Language Arts. And this is, we call it ELA, but this is actually a reading test. So those are really interesting data points, and we're continuing to monitor our student progress with this system of analysis. As you scroll down, you can see our change in SAT scores despite the pandemic. We actually have seen our scores, our student scores actually increase over the last few years. So whereas the state average has actually gone down, Madison SAT scores on average have gone up. We have some ACT data here, which has been largely the same. And then we also report out on college acceptances. The reason, I just want to give a little caveat here, the reason we showed these college acceptances is because when I first arrived here, there was a deep concern because some of the rankings had shifted. There was a grave concern that that our schools were less competitive and our students were going to be look less competitive for colleges. So we began to track this from year to year, not to overly lionize elite or selective universities. Rather, we wanted to demonstrate that students from Madison Public Schools are able to gain access to the most competitive institutions in the world. So these were the acceptances as of twenty twenty-one. In case you haven't heard, we had a Yale acceptance this year. We've already had a Brown acceptance as well, so we want to, we're very proud of those students. But again, these are acceptances, not necessarily where students choose to go. And we're very proud of all of our students for their acceptances, and even for those who are not who to decide not to go directly to college. We just want to make sure that students are on a path and attracted is that gives that that gives them the most potential for their lives. In the ranking and rating systems, you'll see we get into a couple of different types. Our greatest interest to the community are probably greatschools.org, greatschools.org is connected to Zillow, the website. Why? So when people are looking up their homes, Zillow has become quite popular. When they look up the school ratings, this comes from great schools. We've had a lot of concerns because they use the civil rights data collection that is old and the NJSLA scores that are also old. And as a result of that, for whatever reason, Madison High School gets this four out of ten on the equity score. Now, you can dig into this on the website, and it's pretty clear that the just that a big part of this negative weighting here has to do with, again, those suspension and chronic absenteeism rates, which are significantly disproportionate at the time. We anticipate that these will change. There's also a funny anomaly on the site, and this is a good lesson for how these sites work because they really are automated, they're not really being monitored by humans. So for example, you might have noticed on this site that Madison High School gets three out of five stars. And you think to yourself, three out of five stars, wow, that just seems crazy. And if you go down and you actually dig through the reviews, what you'll find is that way back in twenty ten, somebody went on, and I presume the same person on the same day, February first, twenty ten, gave one, two, three, four, five, six one star reviews with no comments on the same day. This was never flagged by them, and it was just left there and it's still there. I've reported it multiple times now. They still haven't done anything about it. But ever since these twenty ten ratings, the majority of the ratings are very positive. If you average the ratings from the last ten years, Madison High School's average rating is a four point four. So again, just a little little lesson is to kind of like kind of cautiously how to interpret these things. Neach.com is another one that people are aware because it's connected to real estate. So we've gone up a little bit there. Some people to pay close attention to US News and World Report rankings, they used to give us good information about what their research or about about what their ranking system consisted of and how they calculated their rankings. And then we recently, when we tried to inquire as to why we lost eight spots this last year, they told us, oh, And then we recently, when we tried to inquire as to why we lost eight spots this last year, they told us, oh, well, we, we'd be happy to share that with you. In fact, we just launched a new product called the School Analysis Comparison Tool. And for $2,000, for $2,500 a year, we will give you access for comparable data and our formula. So, so I'm not necessarily opposed to spending money to learn any more about our schools and their performances, but we found that a little, a little, you know, a little concerning. So you can please feel free to read through those. Another point that's really interesting, I mentioned the opportunity gap is our climate surveys. So we administered climate surveys. We've been administering these for a few years and we were able to group them kind of loosely. This is not, I wouldn't call this a, I, I grouped these indicators that we had developed onsite based on community questions. And they, they've, they line up pretty well with research, with indicators that are actually used in education research. So I sort of loosely organized them into these aggregate groupings so that we can get a sense as to some certain, as to how we're doing on the whole in certain areas. But these are indicators that we thought were important to understand from our students. And importantly here, I used a heat map approach to try to show how many of our students in, in each group across the district responded affirmatively, so positively, they agreed with this statement. And to see if we saw that certain subgroups were experiencing school more negatively. Do economically disadvantaged students have a less positive experience in school? Do English language learners have a less positive experience in school? And interestingly, what we found, and you can just kind of see with your eyes, is that there really is not a whole lot of difference across these categories. There's a few small anomalies here and there, but for the most part, that's not necessarily what you'd expect. You know, there's been a lot of concerns about whether or not our schools are welcoming to students who are not from our country or who aren't English speakers, but our ELL rates were among the highest in the list. So I have two, two, uh, two tables here that can be looked at. And it is very interesting to see that whether it would be looked through the lens of race, special education, economic disadvantage or English language learners, our students are having a very comparably positive experience in our schools. Particularly, you see things like, I have an adult in the school that I trust. These numbers are, these affirmative numbers are very strong. Now, there, there's still some students who are answering negative. Of course, that's a concern for us and that's, so there is still work to do here. But this is, uh, there's some positive, some reasons to be cautiously optimistic about the state of our schools in terms of the climate culture. We did notice here that some of the indicators around student engagement are not quite what we would hope that they would be. So we're going to be looking into this a little bit as a school district this year. And then lastly, I get into kind of summary and next steps, talk about our theory of action effectively. We want to get down to be able to drill down our data to the student level so that way we can provide students with more individualized responses and supports in school. It's really critically important. We are, we're, we're having very, we appear to be having a very positive impact across all groups of students. But when you look at overall performance levels, we still have some disproportionality in student achievement. And we still have many students regardless, across all demographics, who, who are not quite performing at the level that of course that we want them to. So we're going to be continuing to do data analysis, reflection, and really, most importantly, building out further systematizing our data collection systems or progress monitoring systems and ensuring that we have structures in our school day and resources available so that students who are not meeting grade level standards can have those standards met. Beyond that, we are also looking continually expanding our, our many opportunities for all students. I know there was a concern when I first got here about not just our high achieving students, not just our struggling students, but also our students who are kind of in the middle, as, as we sometimes say. And the reality is that at Madison High School, we were now offering a variety of additional paths. We have a new partnership with Morse County School of Technology, which is going to start next year. We're going to be, we have a new government leadership academy, which we're, we're really, really excited to be, to be bringing and was really inspired by the civic engagement in Madison. So that's going to launch next year. We're really, and that's, that's something that is a great opportunity for our students. Over the last few years, we've grown a senior internship program, which I'm sure many of you are familiar with. So our seniors have the opportunity to actually spend a better part of their senior year actually in the field and gaining experience actually working in local businesses. On top of that, we've been expanding our AP offerings, our STEAM and, and engineering offerings. Our business program has been growing pretty significantly. And so as a result, our hopes are that through, in, through broad and diverse programming and individualized focus, we can continually to improve our schools to the point that we have near, my goal is to have near universal positive experience in our schools and near universal academic achievement at grade level and really at ability level. So that is, I could talk a lot more, but I've already talked too much. I'm pretty sure I'm over my 15 minutes. So I would like to thank everybody for giving me that time and, and I would say, I'd be happy to take, if there are time, if there is time for questions, I would be happy to do my best to respond.
Thank you, Mark, for your time and joining us. And as you said, the, one of your goals is to empower students. And I know you had packed a, a lot of information with a short amount of time, but you empowered us and those that are watching tonight. And we'll watch at a later date to, you know, take a deeper dive on your website to see the presentation and, and the slides. And I want to commend you and the leadership of the Board of Education for, you know, managing the schools to such a high level during a very difficult time. And we have our shared services committee, but that's just a small slice of the fact that together, what the Board of Education does, what the school system does, what the, our council does and what our borough employees do make Madison such a special place. With that, I'll, I think Bob, you had a question or comment?
Yeah, it's just a general comment. First, I just wanted to applaud you for how you look at students across the board, both those, both ethnically and whether they're economically challenged or not. That is a wonderful way to approach this and thank you for that. And that's just a general comment. And this has nothing to do with numbers. All three of my children went through the Madison High School system. All three of them said that when they went to college, they had absolutely no trouble adjusting to the scholastic requirements of college, that the Madison High School system really served them well. They were very well prepared. So again, I want to applaud the Madison High School system for the work that they did with the students. I think it's a great job. And looking at the colleges that they were sent to, that's evidence of it right there. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Landry. I greatly appreciate that. And please give your, give your children my best wishes for their continued success. We certainly love to hear that. And I do have to very quickly just, I'm trying to be expeding here, but I do have to thank all of our administrative staff and our teachers, our faculty, our principals, my team, that was a big part of putting this together. Assistant superintendent, my assistant superintendent, Dan Ross, did a tremendous amount of work in organizing much of this data. A lot of these programs, Dr. Santora was a big part of spearheading as well. So I'm just really grateful for all of their work. And of course, I have to thank our Board of Education because they have been such great partners. Thank Ms. Cohen for bringing me on when she was on the Board of Education and, and of course, being a great partner then too. But it's been a, it's been, there's been a lot of work to have been done, but we have a, we have a really amazing team. I'm really blessed to, to, to be a part of it. So thank you, Mr. Landry.
Any other questions, Deb?
Your second comment, I've said it at Board of Ed meetings, but I'm going to say it here. The way that Madison has handled the pandemic is, to be honest, quite amazing. I work in a district. We're hybrid. We were in school, we were remote before Christmas, we were hybrid remote, and now we're hybrid again. So the fact that they have managed to keep the schools open, I think is huge. But in addition to that, the high school at least rearranged the schedule to make it so that it worked better. Kids still got fed, but it worked better, but, and the communication's been great at the high school. Rachel, I don't know about the elementary school experience for you, but at the high school, it's been very nice.
Thank you.
We'll, we'll let Rachel come over the elementary experience and then we'll go to Eric.
I, I just want to underscore what Deb said about, you know, as a parent of a second grader, we are at the beginning of our Madison Public School journey, you know, with an eight-year-old son at home. And it's certainly been an unexpected way to start. You know, we've had two years now. His first two years of school have been not what anyone would have expected, of course. But he has been, he's had a great enriching experience. We, as parents, have had a lot of support from the district, both teachers and administrators at Kings Road School in our case. And I just want to underscore the comments that I am continually amazed at the, the work the entire school district administration and staff and teachers do to keep our kids learning, engaged and part of a community despite the ups and downs and the sudden twists and turns of working through this pandemic. So thank you for your hard work and your leadership superintendent's work.
Thank you. Appreciate that greatly. And I'll extend all these fine words to our, to our faculty and staff.
And Eric?
Yeah, I, I just think it's important that this highlights the fact that, you know, the last two years, while Mark and I spent a lot of time on the phone and in meetings about COVID during my time on the Board of Health, that it's not all COVID all the time. And while, you know, the, the school district and others have done a great job of dealing with the pandemic and, and moving through, there's a lot, lot of work that goes on beyond kind of the emergent issue and, and making sure that our community is getting the education they all deserve. So hats off to Mark and the, and the rest of the team.
Any other comments or? All right. I would thank, Mark, thank you again for taking the time and at least you don't have a long drive home, so you'll be all set. And again, pass on, you know, thanks to the, the board, your leadership team, our, the faculty, the staff of all the schools and the parents, volunteers that are also working to make our schools the best. So thank you.
That's great. Thank you very much. I think I'm realizing, I think I missed Mr. Hoover in my, my, my hellos. So Mr. Hoover, if I did, I apologize about that. It's always a pleasure to see you all.
By the way, each year the council appoints a liaison to the Board of Education. This year it happens to be me. So if I could do anything to help you at all, please let me know.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Hoover. I appreciate that. Thank you all so much. It's such a pleasure to see you all. And again, we look forward to continued cooperation and some, some great work on behalf of our students and community in Madison. Be well, everybody.
Thank you. Take care. Be well. All right, now we'll move on to a bit and Jim?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to share my screen and get the presentation started right away. You're with me here. I've got my two computers open so I can see what you're seeing, but then I'll have a presentation myself. Mayor, today we're going to talk about Public Works Utilities and Utility Financial Performance, Public Works specifically the Water Utility. I will kind of quickly go through some of these slides and skip over a bunch. We're also going to hear from Ken O'Brien and Jim Matina. We're going to have a, the presentation is a quick review of the budget process. We'll talk to Jim, we'll talk to Ken, and then we'll talk about the utilities, financial performance. We're not making any recommendations for the 2022 budget at this point in time. Specifically, we are really focusing in on just reporting how the utilities did and giving you an opportunity to talk to Jim and Ken. The draft municipal budget presented on paper, we'll have administrations recommendations at that time. Deb went over the proposed hearing schedule, so I'm just going to slip past this slide, but it's there for anyone that is looking at this at home. This presentation will be on the annual financial process page on RosenNet. We talk about a budget cycle here. I'm not going to go into it too much, except to say we, we go around the merry-go-round a couple of times, pivoting around to strategic planning guidelines till we finally get to a point where we feel comfortable that council understands all the different interconnections and of all the different budgets. There are three entities, the current fund, the electric utility and a water utility through actual three separate budgets, and they're talked out on that slide. Same, there are three separate capital accounts. They're explained on that slide. And again, these are, these are slides that have actually been presented probably for five years in a row. So I don't want to spend time this evening on this. I want to make sure to be respectful for Ken and Jim, who have to get up super early tomorrow morning. And this talks about whether it's a budget or spending plan. I will always say that this is a spending plan. When council votes, you vote on how much money can be used on rock salt. And we can't change that number throughout the year unless we do a special emergency or a special vote at the end of the year. So it's really, you know, a regular home budget or business budget can change throughout the year. Our budget does not. This talks about the budget process, going through capital departments, financial doc, financial document prep and public meetings. That's a recurring slide and all this are going fast, but I'm just going to keep doing it. That's okay. This is a breakdown of our tax bill. I think everyone's seen this before, the difference between the schools portion of the tax municipal and county. This is published every year in a one sheet budget summary along with other information. And with that, I'm hopeful that Jim Matina has been promoted to be a presenter here and that he's available to start talking. James, are you there?
Jimmy, just need to unmute yourself.
Here we go.
Hope we got you.
Sorry.
Good job, James. Welcome aboard. I'll flip through the slides as you tell me to go.
All right, we're going to start with some complete jobs, projects. I'm not going to go through everything, just a couple of important ones. They're all important. But we upgraded, Jim Trimble did a great job upgrading all the AMI smart meters. We got probably 95, 98% done in town. We replaced some relays at James Park Substation. So we have new technology for feeder protection, fault location, monitor control and communication. That's going to come in handy later on down the line when we start running the fiber between the substations. Rest is all jobs that we completed. The Burger King job was a big job. We cleaned that up. It was a big mess. Going down a little bit, we replaced the roof on Kings Road Substation. And LED lights, we're still continuing doing all the streets. Right now, we have, we did 342 overhead streetlights. We got 60 more streets left. And that's a lot of lights. And plus we have all the commercial district, the Victorian post lights. We bought some retro fit kits to go in there to replace the high pressure sodiums with LED bulbs. Instead of buying a whole new fixture that would cost about 25, 2,800, I spent $550 on these kits. We did, we bought 70 of them. We're going to start on Central Avenue in the spring and see how they look. We've been working with our vendor for about a year and a half to design this. So I think it looks good. It's the way to go because the high pressure sodiums are, you know, outdated. Next. Okay, here's my goals and objectives. Madison Green Condos, we're almost done with this. We couldn't get to it the last couple of years with, with the storms. We're going to try to get to it this year. We continue upgrading all our tie points because that comes in handy in storms when you want to backfeed to other circuits. James Park Substation, we still got to do some oil circulation system on two transformers that was left here by Mike Piano. Has to be done. Relays at James Park, they're complete on one end. We still got to do two more breakers. It's not a big deal. Kings Road Substation, we're doing the relays there. Right now, we're going the process of ordering them. They're backordered right now, but we'll get them in. Well, B Station Road, this has been on the thing for the last couple of years. I'm working with Bob Vogel with this. And the rest is training, bucket truck rescue, pole top rescue, CPR. Next to this, I'm not going to go through. This is, you guys can read, this is ongoing activities that we do all year long, every year. Plus projects and all this. So it's just a lot of work. Next, Jim. This is where I want to get to here. Our special projects right now is to continue our relay system at James Park, finishing that up. Start Kings Road, finishing that up and doing all our tie points. Once we get our tie points in, you know, any storms come, we can start backfeeding other areas. It'll help us out in the long run. Now coming over here to the upcoming projects, this is what I'm saying. You know, you got storms to deal with, you got everyday issue to deal with. And now we have 16 Waverly Place upgrading the service, four Community Place, we reconstructed five poles. We still have work there. They're building all over town. And 297 Main Street, they knocked the building down, they're building there. 14 Lincoln Place, everyone knows that. That's the movie theater. That's a big job. You know, this system's been an old system for a long time. And now they're going to, we have to go underground back there. We got to reconvert everything. Got to get engineers involved. We already had like eight meetings. We're still not finished. We had to get permission from land owners to cross their property. It's a lot of work. It's a lot to get finished here. And then 18 Madison Avenue, that's a demo, 120 Madison Avenue is a demo. And then eighteen Madison Avenue, that's a demo. One-twenty Madison Avenue is a demo. And then we, we got to start Cook Avenue parking lot, that reconstruction. So with all that, it's, it's a lot of work, but we'll get to it.
Jim, I want to jump in and just explain the importance of those tie points really quickly. You have circuits on your house that maybe go to your living room and then go to your bedroom. By tying, and they're just very similar to our substations. Imagine a circuit that goes out Ridgedale Avenue and ends near the high school. And another circuit that goes out Greenwood Avenue and ends near Lorraine Road. Jim ties the two of those circuits together, has the ability to tie those two of those circuits together. So if there's a tree that's down, he can feed the back half of Ridgedale Avenue through the Greenwood Avenue line and, and bifurcate or take a very small section of Ridgedale Avenue and work on it. So it's, it, it, it increases reliability and, and allows for shorter outages. And it's a really great thing.
Okay. The meters up top, this is Jim Burnett's doing a hundred thousand. It's not mine. The seventy thousand is for a dump truck this year. I think the electric department really needs, uh, our own dump truck with a plow. Uh, we, we do do our plowing around here in our substations and once we want to, uh, bring reels on the job or dirt or cut down a tree or poles, we could really use the dump truck. And plus the crew now is doing tree trimming. So I'm probably going to purchase a, a chipper this year too. So we don't have to keep bothering, uh, Ken O'Brien with his stuff, and we can help each other out with it in the storms. Union Hill, that's a reconstruction job. Independence Court, it was messed up for the last twenty-eight years. We're not going to be able to get to that. It's running okay. There was no problems. We check it all the time. We did a lot of fixing over there. But, uh, right now, they'll tell you right now, we're not going to be able to get to that this year. So that's going to have to be pushed out. The stuff on the bottom here, the fifty thousand, this is all Bob Vogel's stuff. So I only have like two things.
Questions for Jim?
All right, and quick questions, uh, I've been then Deb.
Yeah, Jim, just a
A little bit quick.
Yeah, it'll be real quick. You know, I've worked with you guys during two bad storms in this town, you know, uh, hurricanes and whatnot. And God bless that we've had you in town to do the repair work. Are there any parts of the distribution system that you might want to put underground that's currently above ground? I know it's a lot of work. It could be expensive. But just for, in general, would there be any parts of the distribution that maybe you'd want to put underground?
If it was up to me, I would have done all Cook Avenue and Elm Street parking lot back in the day.
Okay. You're going to do Lincoln Place, James? A little bit of that underground?
Lincoln Place, we could have did that too. Yep.
The new service for the theater is going to, a little bit of that's going to go underground?
Yep, that's going underground. But, you know, he's talking about a bigger piece.
Residential areas, but that's way out. That's not the ballpark then.
I mean, then you need transformer vaults. I mean, it's a lot of work, but it could be done.
And also in your project, project list, you'll see that, that just because it goes underground doesn't mean it can be forgotten, as Union Hill is all underground, but now has to, uh, be, be updated. I, I, I think at some point we might want to look at some ordinances related to, you know, we've had two recent, um, major projects, one, one on Community Place and, um, which is underway, and one on Greenwood that, um, a large building going in there that I, I think would have been good to look at the, you know, require the utilities in front of these buildings to, to go underground if possible and, you know, have the, uh, contract, the, the developer do that because, you know, it's so much better.
There's service goes underground to a pad mount transformer. We don't put the transformers on the pole nowhere, but I know what you're saying. Try to get rid of the poles and lines.
And both, both those locations, the lines are, you know, pretty close to the building. Yep.
Yep, we know.
Yep, and then Maureen.
Um, just two quick questions. On the Cook Avenue parking lot, uh, have we heard from the utilities? Are they now going to start moving what they need to move so you can do what you need to do?
Yes, that's in the process. They're talking, but we have all the poles set up there for them and the, the agreement went out. Ray Cody did a lot of work on that one.
I, I think, I think we're in better shape with Verizon than with Altice, but, uh, we're, we're working on it.
And then the last one, um, are there any examples of how the automated meters have helped you make quicker repairs?
Well, not right now, but in the future it will, you know? Once they get the fiber in the substations and we can work with it. I mean, they could tell us outages and stuff like that, but you know, outages come from people, the street goes out of power, they call the police department. So we know which street goes out. But what's good about it, if the street goes back on and just say one house didn't go back on because their main breaker trip, we could get a reading saying that meter's not working. And then we could go to the house and, and see what's the problem there. So it, it all, it's going to work out.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome. And, uh, Maureen?
Yes, we were talking about purchasing two new trucks. Are they going to be hybrids? Or is that not possible for that, for the truck?
I'm getting the same what, uh, Ken O'Brien ordered. I'm going through the specs from him.
Okay.
Can you answer that, Ken?
Yeah, Ken, they're not hybrid. They're severe duty trucks, which mean they're meant for snow plowing and in severe operations. And none of the manufacturers have the battery capacity to, for that kind of an operation or the recharging quick for that operation.
Thank you.
Uh, Rachel?
Jim, thank you for the presentation. It's always, uh, astonishing to see how much work your department undertakes and completes every year to keep Madison running. In lots of ways that, you know, most regular customers are not even aware of. You, um, you mentioned that the hundred thousand dollars for automated meters was not your doing. I saw how you sort of threw that over to Jim Burnett, which was funny. But I know that we're, you've been reporting on the great progress of automated meters for the last two years, and now we're ninety-five percent installed. So could you or Jim just elucidate a little what the hundred thousand dollars is for if we're at ninety-five percent, what, what remains left for that project?
Sure, we're, we're looking to get the last five percent done. We're looking, but some of that is, is customers not, um, wanting to have the work done. We're looking to have some metering infrastructure that would be, um, we want to have some money aside for consultants and for metering infrastructure if we want to have it at the substation. Right now, we can tell every individual customer on Ridgedale Avenue, we want to look at the possibility of having meters on every circuit or other types of, equipment that can give us more, um, regional data that this part of town is consuming this much, and it allows us to, uh, to better manage the system that way. Um, down the road, um, we're going to be doing a, a pretty large, um, study on the entire system. Jim and I have been having lots of meetings on this, had a conversation the other day and, uh, have another conversation later this week with consultants who are going to basically map out our entire, uh, grid and our entire distribution system. And we're talking about having some larger solar carports. That information is going to be coming to council and to the public, um, in the coming weeks. But, uh, as an example, we are looking at a solar, um, carport structure on Ridgedale Avenue. That's at the end of the Ridgedale Avenue, um, line. So that's a real interesting electric, um, and, and engineering dynamic where you have our substation pushing electricity out to the high school, and then you're going to have this pretty large, um, solar facility pushing energy back. So we need to do a large study of the, um, of our system, be able to make sure that solar penetration is working, that we're able to handle, um, future growth with electric vehicles, future growth with, um, heating with electric and getting off of gas. I know that's something you're passionate about, Rachel, and everything else. So, so that, maybe that is better to be called, um, electric meters and infrastructure and studies. Because we're going to be spending a lot of money on that, um, and
Yeah, so, so maybe it'd be good to, uh, edit that, um, listing to indicate that so that, uh, people understand.
Well, you answered my second question, which was, I was actually going to ask what the electric department is doing from planning perspective to plan ahead for increased electrification of vehicles and building systems. And it sounds like the same one Adam covered some of that analysis and preparation work. Is there anything else that, you know, that's more about the, the, the? So that's what the industry would call a non-wire solution, where we're doing analysis and investing in planning and, uh, management. Is there an infrastructure, uh, upgrade or work in progress that, um, maybe Jim Matina, you want to touch on that has to do with increased electrification and, and greater demand in the town and how we're, you know, making improvements, uh, to, uh, support that?
We're always upgrading streets, uh, bigger transformers, heavier wire to take the load and capacity. And I just want to touch on one thing with the, the charging stations for the cars. We just completed the last one today. So they're all energized and ready to go. The last one was just put in over by Kings Road by KRE. And another thing with these lights, I just want to touch a little bit on this before I forget. All the Victorian post lights, we got a hundred and eighty-six post lights. So to change them all out and put all new fixtures for twenty-five hundred dollars or more, it'd be a lot of money, and I can't see. So that's why we're going with these retro fit lights. We already, we ordered seventy of them. I'm going to start on Central Avenue in the spring. I like to get a little feedback from everyone once we start putting them up. It's hard to match a high pressure sodium light because it's an orange glow. And the LED light is very white, and you, you still have to have the brightness to bright up the sidewalk in the street for safety. But you don't want it too bright where you're going to blind drivers. So what they did, they made a, a lens. It looks like a frisbee and it's orange, and it goes on top of the lens. So it reflects off there and it throws the orange glow out. So I just wanted a little feedback. If we like them, we don't like them, so I don't order any more. But we're going to start on Central Avenue in the spring.
And that'll, that'll be good to see.
All right. Go ahead.
Eric, yep.
Just, just one question, Jim. You had mentioned the Union Hill Independence Project likely couldn't happen this year. So what's the recommendation on that? Those dollars that are allocated to that?
Not this year. I, I'll tell you right now, there's no way we'd be able to do it this year with all the work we have. Uh, we do go up there and, and, uh, there's there's transformers that are, I mean, this was all done by contractors years ago, thirty years ago. And, uh, we, we fixed a lot of wires up there and we constantly go up there and open things up, make sure everything's running. We haven't had any outages up there. So, but that's not going to get done this year.
So Eric, just so you're aware, um, the capital budget that we propose is, um, a suggested capital budget. Uh, we project out five years. We do our best, but sometimes, um, something comes up where a piece of equipment, it, it needs to be replaced quicker or something needs to be put off. Each one of those capital items on that list that was, uh, presented before the hundred thousand for the AMI, Jim's Mason Dump Truck, all those items are, are voted separately via ordinance. So, um, you know, the, the budget process that we have in the state budget document that Deb referenced, we will not be encumbering that money. You'll be encumbering it as a, as a governing body through ordinances, both introduction and hearing, um, later on in the year.
And if you get a storm in the middle of the year, I mean, that puts you months behind.
Jim, do you want to talk for a second about the challenges with supply chain and, and getting materials?
That's another thing. I'm eleven months still looking for transformers and tra- and poles and a lot of, uh, hardware that we ordered eleven months ago. Uh, so I got, I have a lot of stock because the last couple of years I was stocking up, so I'm in good shape, even if we do have a s- storm. I don't know if there's any pictures you could show them. I wanted to show them the pole yard. We just built the new pole yard so I could have more poles stocked and ready to go. Where we, we're putting the poles down by the
James, let me see if I can get my, uh, uh, technology going here. I think there was at least some pictures there.
This building back, can everyone see this? This building back here is the Road Department Public Works Building, and our poles were over here and they were on the ground. And I could only fit so many. So I couldn't order a lot. So what we did is I looked it up to how to build a pole yard. So we got these mafia blocks. Our guys did everything, as you could see. Now I could put a ton of forty, forty-five foot poles here, forty foot poles here, and then we're ready to go. We don't have to worry about replacing poles that we don't have enough or whatever. And that's what we're doing with all our stock, transformers, wire. We're, we're ready.
Good planning. Uh, Rachel?
I'm sorry to belabor this, but, uh, since I was the liaison to utilities last year, I actually have at my fingertips, uh, really great story about how the new automated meter system was in a great benefit to the borough. So I'm going to highlight that. It's from November. It was a busy time. And so if it slipped anyone's mind, it's probably because it was right around Thanksgiving. But we got this email from Jim Trimble, who gave us a great example of the outage system in action. Uh, Mr. Trimble got an email notification that there were four outages on Woodland Road. He went over to take a look and it turned out that all four meters were out and those houses were out of power. He called the lineman. They came right away, fixed the problem. And within a few minutes, Jim got, Jim Trimble got another email that all four houses had been restored, all automated through the system. But the big difference is that, uh, none of the residents had called this in. They were all, you know, at work, out of the house, had no idea the house is out of power. And the linemen were able to come and fix the issue before any homeowners knew there was any issue at all. So it was an example of the outage notification system working perfectly. It in, you know, over time it'll increase response time to address power outages. And it'll give the linemen a better idea of what we're dealing with when they're heading into a power outage situation. So a small example of, um, you know, the return on investment for this new system, and I think, uh, a sign of, of more great, uh, reliability and responsiveness to come.
Yep, great, great story.
Very good.
Another story too, Mayor, if I could share it really quickly, where Jim Trimble was seeing an, an on again, off again, on again, off again, on again, off again for a particular house. And he said, this is really weird. And he, he pretty, he knows so many people in town, right? So he goes on the door, knocks on the door. Oh, hi, Mrs. Smith, how are you? Do you have, uh, a problem going on with your electricity? She's like, you know, I actually, my phone is in my hand right now. I was going to call the electrician. Something's going on and my lights are going on and off. And Jim can probably explain this better, but sometimes the surface line from the utility pole, if it's cold, there could be a, a minor fracture in it. And depending on wind, it can open and close and open and close. And, and Jim Matina's, um, staff figured it out and fixed it and kept her from having to call an electrician to come in and, uh, and tell them, you know, charge money to, to diagnose something that had nothing to do with the electrician.
No, yeah.
Great. Well, thank you, Jim, and thank you for all the, the work. And, um, I encourage residents to go back to that slideshow to look at such as that you just saw fly in there, which is ongoing activity, special projects. There's so much else going on. And now we'll bring on, um, Ken O'Brien.
Good evening, everyone. Um, I just want to say, well, I meant to try to talk to Mark when he was, Mark Schwartz and I keeping contact during storms, before storms. Sometimes he calls me at five o'clock in the morning just to see how we're doing with the storm and the roads. And I just got to tell you that Mark is a very engaged superintendent, especially in, in my area that I deal in. So it's, appreciate seeing him here tonight.
Ken, if you want to start, I'll just flip through the slides as you, as you want.
Yep, so, um, we worked on the recycling center this year, uh, quite a bit. That got set up and is in service. We have a compactor there that we're upgrading already because the amount of use the recycling center is getting. So we're, uh, setting aside for a new computer, uh, monitor for it so that it runs more often and it will pack a little bit more. We did a couple of grants. We worked on two pieces of cleaning, uh, pieces of equipment, the burn cleaner. They were old diesel engines without catalytic converters. While they are diesel engines now, they have catalytic converters and they have regen systems, so they burn a lot cleaner and certainly use a lot less, uh, fuel.
So that was a front-end loader and a skid steer, right, Ken?
Running loader sits here, yeah. Uh, we continue to have a safe working environment. We do have injuries on occasion. The, uh, kind of work we do when you're working with hammers and water mains, uh, backos and that type of thing, you're going to have injuries on occasion. We just try to limit them as much as possible. The recycling center enhancements, uh, we're going to be starting styrofoam. And I'm sure I came up in council report tonight. So we've, um, tried to take the recycling center and build on what we had. So I think we opened it up maybe a year or so ago, and now we have food waste. We have electronics been up there. We have styrofoam. So we're just So we're just trying to add things on as they come about. And that's, uh, working out quite well. The, uh, I work with the D D C, you know, Lisa contacts me on a pretty regular basis. Uh, I'm doing items and cleaning up or fixing a sidewalk or something in the downtown. I know our downtown, I consider it like our living room and it's something that's a showcase. So we're always working on it with the sweeper, the street sweeper operations start early in the morning. And one of the things I do is we always make sure we're doing the roads coming into the downtown because again, I call like coming into our living room. And that's what people see and that's what I noticed anyway, the curb lines. Um, we're working on a grant to update the heating system. Uh, working with that, with today, we've got some information, we're looking at different, uh, ways of doing that. Now we're looking at something, uh, heat pump system, if that's possible to do in that size and that bigger garage. And so we're hoping to get a little grant for that and we've contacted, uh, P S E N G to see if they can have some kind of a grant towards that or, or put something towards that. I don't think that they'll be too interested in it, but we're hoping for the best in that. And, uh, on the daily operation or carbon footprint, you know, we are looking at vehicles purchases. We're buying an electric snow thrower, uh, to be used here at H D M. It's, it's on our mind all the time. And when I was talking earlier about class eight vehicles, class eight vehicle is a big truck, a, a big up, uh, tractor trailer dump truck like we have. Right now, uh, you could buy an electric garbage truck, but it, it goes out and it, um, packs garbage and, and recycling and goes to the landfill and dumps. And then they plug it in for, uh, ten or twelve hours overnight to charge. One of the problems you run into with an electric vehicle is they don't have the battery storage to push snow and run a heavy duty salter and have all those other hydraulics working and then do a quick charge. So the manufacturers aren't there yet. I do believe it'll come because the private sector will start, you know, look, leaning more that way. And the truck like Jimmy's buying is mason dump. I think that that's what you'll foresee is you'll see small, uh, sanders, small plow trucks and stuff like that, that'll happen. But one of the big things is the infrastructure for charging. If you're going to have big vehicles, you're going to need either the time to, to charge them or the ability to get that much more electricity through that quick. And the cities that are using those electric garbage trucks, um, aren't using them for snow plowing and stuff. So they're kind of, uh, expanding their fleet. And if you're going to do that, that's something that we would have to have a conversation about. Uh, we have an old building down there, we call it the paint shed. Um, it used to store a lot of paint when we did line painting and stuff like that. It, it's in bad shape, we need to expand that. Uh, it certainly came in handy during COVID. I don't think that, um, COVID type, uh, viruses are going to go away. I think we may be, uh, dealing with that type of flu type thing and we may have a, a situation where we still want to, uh, separate employees a little bit. So it's, it's very helpful to have that. And we do a lot of inside work right now, we're doing, working on some of the benches that we do. And, um, it's where we keep all the materials that can't freeze, uh, over the winter time. And there's a lot of stuff we have that doesn't do that. The material handling bins, that's part of the recycling that's, uh, going to be upgraded. Um, the compactor is going to be upgraded, the bins, we're going to raise them up so that the dumpsters are a little bit more flush with the fencing. That's a little bit of a project, we're going to have to do some drainage and, and work on that with Mr. Vogel's office. Uh, we're doing some paving around the, uh, storage dumps for salt. It's, it's just old, it's getting beat up and we're starting to have asphalt broke up a little bit, uh, and ends up in, it's in the salt spreaders a little bit. And vehicles, the, uh, that's a mason dump, we're going to add on to our fleet, that's a smaller type vehicle, run of the mill, that, that's something that, uh, we use and we just replace the Jeeps. We both have, are fifteen years old, we're getting a new one. Uh, that number's actually probably got to go to forty-five thousand now because just before the pandemic, when we priced it out, it was thirty-five thousand. However, uh, those do all our parking lots, our commercial lots. It's much easier to do with alleyways and all the commercial lots, the municipal lots and around Waverly with this much smaller vehicle where they can back in and back out. And when the commuter lots are busy, as people pull two or three cars out, we actually plow that a little bit to make it easier for the next person. Because our commuter lots, as you know, there are a thousand cars a day, people coming off the train. So that's, uh, something we have to do and it's just fifteen years old, it's time to, uh, replace one. Uh, Jimmy, what?
Water utility, can you see it, Ken?
Yep, so with the water utility, um, we work with, uh, Bob Vogel's office quite a bit on this. Uh, well, B, he is doing some improvements in that. When you see that, uh, next line down there, we, redevelopment, that's for the actual well itself. There's a motor and a pump that sits on it. So that's a little bit different, the, the improvements are to building the roof, the windows, the fire alarm system, those type of items. But the redevelopment of the well is we're not drilling a new well, we're redoing it, recasing it, checking it out, making sure it's all good. And, and that sometimes can improve your flow and, uh, doesn't have anything to do with water quality, but it just makes sure that every twenty or thirty years that it's, it's upgraded, the casings are good and you don't have a failure. It's all type proactive stuff. Uh, water valve replacements, that's an ongoing, uh, type thing. We have a bunch of valves we keep in storage. We do lose a couple of valves a year for various reasons, sometimes it's age. And sometimes something happens, we go to turn a valve off for a development or, and we can't get it back on because the pack is there and then we have to do it. So that twenty thousand dollars, we don't always spend twenty thousand dollars in that lineup. We might buy three or four valves, the price of those going up, there's a little bit of a lead time now, but that's kind of what that is. And Jim Burnett is working on the leak detection studies, part of that is through the metering, we're hoping to gain some as we more meter houses. And then also we talk about bringing a system in that where you can put, uh, leak detection on fire hydrants and you'll pick it up. And then you have the money in there for the meters and a meter modules, that's going pretty well. And as we get the town going along with that, I think we'll pick up some efficiencies in the, the water system and all with that, that, at least that's our goal.
And we also had a Jim Trimble story on the, uh, how a water meter made a difference with someone that, uh, had a leaky toilet, may have been that way for a while, but the new meter was good enough to, uh, capture it. And so saving water and collecting what we, uh, we send out, uh, questions?
And that does happen, sometimes when meters get old, they spin a little slower, they don't go faster. So when we put a new meter in someone's house, all of a sudden they get a bigger water bill and they think it has to do with the meter, but usually it's a running toilet or a dripping faucet or something.
And there's the, there's, there's the old saying that water meters are like mayor, it starts spinning a little slower and taking. That's not a same. Sorry. Uh, so any questions or comments for, again, a lot of great things going on. All right, oh, an excellent presentation.
Just curious, Ken, I, I know we've invested quite a bit in the recycling center. Uh, last year we've got more improvements coming, we've talked about styrofoam, but overall, the kind of conditions down there and how residents are kind of engaging with the upgraded recycling center?
And residents are engaging with recycling center in whole. Residents like it, it's become, if I put a coffee pot down there, there'd be a bunch of guys hanging out having a cup of coffee in the morning. It's become a place where people meet and they go to the recycling center. And I think some of them text each other and tell them they're going to be down at a certain time and people are using it and bringing things down there. And Bonnie does, who runs the recycling center, does a great job. And every hour that we're open, there's people in there and people talk to us about some ideas. The environmental commission talked to us about food recycling. So we said, sure, let's get it up and running, we got a program for it. The electronics, we always had electronics drop off, but it wasn't the best system. Now there's people seeing the electronics drop off bin and saying, oh, I have an old V C R in my garage or something like that. And bringing it down where that may have ended up in a garbage can before. So we're actually capturing more recycling. Uh, Bonnie Giordano, who works down there is, you know, helpful with people and we get good reports on it, she's doing this and, and we just have, it's worked out very well for the municipality.
Yeah, it just a little shout out for, for Bonnie, I've been down there a couple of times and she just comes across as someone that loves their job. And I think someone managing a rec- recycling system, uh, center could be someone that could be nasty and tell, telling residents that doesn't go there. But she's very helpful and, uh, does everything possible that the, uh, it said the experience, the recycling center is, uh, is like sitting around at Starbucks and so, pretty amazing. Uh, Rachel?
I just wanted to add to the list of, uh, new offerings or receivings, I guess, at the recycling centers, the textile drop off bin, which I know the environmental, the environmental commission advocated for. And I, I want to thank you, Ken, and, and the whole department for being receptive to these suggestions. When I tried to recycle some textiles last week, the bin was a hundred percent full, it's obviously, uh, very popular. Um, and I just wanted to mention that that, uh, is one of the new, um, services that was added recently. And, um, thank you for being continually receptive to these kinds of suggestions as they trickle up, uh, and, uh, whether from residents or the environmental commission passes them forward to you. Um, I want to thank you for, um, talking a little bit about the heat system upgrade at the D P W garage. Um, I, I understand that you initially were exploring the system to upgrade to a more efficient, uh, gas burning system. Um, thank you for, uh, entertaining the suggestion that, uh, we explore heat pump system so that we don't have a, a stranded asset of a fossil fuel burning system in a couple of years from now, which is just going to contribute negatively to our, our carbon balance sheet. And I thank you for, with neither that along with Bob Duffy, I hope that we can look for a way to be, um, efficient and, uh, not be burning fossil fuels on site to, to heat the building. Um, and I also want to thank you for the insight you've provided. You know, uh, we know that New Jersey has a very ambitious plan to phase out diesel trucks, starting in twenty twenty-five and ramping up through twenty thirty-five. So getting some guidance from you about what kinds of trucks, um, you know, will need to be purchasing and where Madison's, uh, fleet fits into this larger statewide effort has been really helpful. So thanks for your wisdom on that.
Thank you.
Uh, Deb?
Um, I know we increased the hours, uh, a couple of years ago and added the Saturday hours, which is great. Is there any chance, and this may be a question, maybe even more for us, but of increasing those hours for those of us that work so that in the evenings, if that's the most convenient time, that we could drop stuff off, at least during parts of the year, I get that it gets really early, it dark early in the winter. But, um, you know, Saturdays aren't always convenient and even as a teacher, I'm not back in town till three or three-thirty. So let alone the people going into the city and that sort of thing. So I think it's just something to consider, I don't know what the cost would be for that, but you know, we've used it several times and you're right, it is always packed.
So one of the things I'd have to take into consideration for that is it's a little bit in a residential neighborhood. And we were conscious when we opened up the recycling center with plantings and put coverings on the fencing. And because we knew that we were adding traffic to that residential neighborhood, there was no doubt we were doing it. And we've added more traffic to it. So I'm just conscious that I know it gets dark now around five o'clock, but also that the neighbors in that area might need a little bit of a break as the sun starts to set sometimes from vehicles coming in and out. So it's something we can look at, but I don't think that the neighbors in the area might be too, um, supportive of the recycling center being open later at night.
That's fair, I just, you know, it just like I said, something to look at, even if it was open till, till four or five, so that, you know, on one of the days, not, not, you know, both days. And then obviously, again, I appreciate the Saturday hours.
Yeah, we'll, we'll look at it, Jim and I'll talk about that, Bonnie, works at both the building and the recycling center. If we can, uh, try to come in late one day, we'll, we'll try to work on it.
Any other questions or comments for Ken? All right, thank you very much, excellent, uh, presentation. And, uh, as I say every year with our budget, um, uh, presentations by departments, it's an opportunity for them to hear their accomplishments and plans and, uh, you know, tonight we've heard some two, two great, um, accomplishments and, uh, goals for the coming years. So well done.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you all.
Hey Mayor, if it's okay, I'd like to, to shift and go to the, um, financial reporting of the utilities. Yep. Uh, again, all these presentation will be on Rosinet. Um, lo- look at that picture to the left of that. I don't know how Jim does it, to be honest with you, how do you deal with, with that when you have a storm like that?
And that's Greenwood Avenue, everything had to be out.
Thank you, James. Okay, um, so, uh, as Councilwoman Cohen mentioned, um, everything, uh, we focus on here is, uh, focused around transparency. All this information is on the annual budget process page. Uh, Mayor, I did make notes on the, uh, five-year capital plan, we'll make those, uh, repost that. Um, I have this really cool, my dad, I'm sorry, it came off screen, my dad was like a hoarder and I found this in the basement about five years ago. It's from nineteen forty-four and it's a report from the mayor and council. And it's just a great historical document, but it shows that way back then, um, the borough of Madison had a great electric utility and that some of the fund balance from the utility was being, um, transferred over, um, to support municipal operations. Um, this is a residential rate comparison, gave this to council, um, earlier in the year, hasn't changed, um, since June of twenty twenty-one. You see the data above, um, rates don't really change that often, but you can see that, uh, Madison, uh, is, is quite competitive across, uh, all of the municipalities that use fund balance for tax relief. And also all the investor owned utilities, especially if you exclude J C P and L. This is for a customer that consumes eight hundred, a residential customer that consumes eight hundred and fifty-five kilowatt hours of consumption in a month. Their bill is a hundred and fifty-four dollars and fifty-five cents, you can see Atlantic City, that bill would be one seventy-five, P S A N G one sixty, Rockland one sixty-eight. So we're less expensive than that, that price of one fifty-four, fifty-five for Madison does include, um, i- the dividend, uh, Mayor. So I just want to make sure everyone's aware of that. Um, and I see Jim Matina, Jim Matina, you can go if you want to, I don't want to keep you here.
All right, I'm here.
Okay, um, uh, so, uh, portfolio of our block contracts, um, this is presentation or this, this chart has been shown before, we haven't made any purchases um, since twenty twenty, thank you, Rachel, for noticing one of the colors was off on this, um, denoting the B P contract in twenty-three, twenty-four. Uh, we haven't made any purchases, we are at least going to explore and look at the market. We know that the days of, uh, rates in the twenty-five handle are gone. Um, we don't know what the situation is going to be with inflation, but we are, um, fully hedged or have purchased contracts out till the end of twenty twenty-four, a hundred percent. And then we have fifty percent of our, um, uh, load, our estimated load calc, um, purchased out through twenty twenty, through the end of twenty twenty-nine. But there's, um, there's more exposure in twenty twenty-five and twenty twenty-six. So we'll be looking at that, we won't be making any determinations until we have conversations with council on that. Um, administration's utility goals are system hardening and continuing to advance the automated metering. Um, I am, I need to work with purchasing and with, uh, Ken O'Brien on either R F P or competitive bid for the remaining four thousand water meters. We did replace, uh, over two hundred water meters over at the Madison Commons in a pilot program and it really went very, very well. It was super helpful for us to figure out what was, um, what worked and what didn't work to make sure, um, the water utility staff, Tom D B S C and, um, crew were comfortable with the way that all went and it went exceptionally well. Special thanks to Tom D B S and Jim Trimble for making that, um, go so smoothly. Uh, this is the A M I portal, it's just kind of cool to see, this isn't my house, it just says I've logged in here is Jim Burnett. Um, and, uh, as Jim Matina mentioned, ninety-five percent of all electric meters are set up for A M I, you can see sixty-five hundred, uh, meters in service. We do have five hundred meters that are actually sitting in stock. Water, uh, modules, we have a water meter, which is the device that spins and collects the data. And then there's a, a, a special electric module that gets put on top of it, a battery operated module that communicates with our system. We have over a thousand water modules, um, out in, in the system. These list, uh, the gatekeepers or the, um, uh, the devices that are out and collect, um, by a radio frequency, um, the metering data. We have them situated, um, all around town and then one right in the center of town. Um, electric utility financial performance, this is one sheet with a whole lot of numbers on it. And I want to just point out that, um, I made some comments here and if you see like E six, that's report, that's referencing E six here. E fourteen is referencing this line here. A whole bunch of numbers here for past years, so you can kind of see things. Very interesting that, uh, cash collections really don't vary that much. We're off a little bit this year, um, residential was up, but offices were down in twenty twenty-one, that makes a whole lot of sense, right? With office buildings, um, being shut down for part of the year and only partially filled. Um, and then also makes sense that we have some office buildings that aren't fully rented. E three talks about the electric utility dividend and over the, since two thousand seventeen, uh, with, uh, the vote of mayor and council over eight point four million dollars in dividends have been distributed to Madison. Energy prices, um, are up significantly, I mentioned that with the block contract image, um, a year ago, that currently the pricing of contracts is up twenty percent higher than our existing contracts. Twenty-five dollars was kind of the low water, um, rate, we're probably looking at more like thirty dollars for a contract now. Um, capacity costs are, 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 I could talk for half an hour, I'm not going to, about how capacity costs work. But through a strange anomaly of, of supply and demand and some other issues, capacity pricing for this year is going to be, um, less expensive than, than normal. But, um, that's this number here, but we're expecting it to rebound in future years. Um, transmission costs, um, are a different cost. I'm going to talk real briefly about the three costs for electricity. There's the actual energy, the. There's the actual energy, the, as Mr. Booker in my physics class taught me, the moving molecules that make this light work and this computer work. Then there is the transmission, that's getting the electricity, that's the toll and the roads to get the electricity from the power plant to, to Madison. We have to pay tolls, just like the garden, you have to pay tolls on the Garden State Parkway for the high tension wires. Capacity is making sure we have enough energy generation for the hottest days of the year. We might consume as a state X, but on hottest days of the year, it might be 2X. We need to have excess additional generation in, ready to go and be turned on on the hottest days of the year. So that's capacity. Transmission costs have gone up significantly. We talked about this in years past. You can see it was $500,000. Now we're at $2 million for a cost for transmission. E14 is a reserve for substation repairs. We need to continue to make repairs. We are mandated by our interconnection agreement to make certain repairs to the substation. That has to happen in the next 18 months. We've talked about that at past meetings. And the sustainable, the E19 and 20 are down here. This is the schedule of fund balance. We used to call it surplus fund balance is really the appropriate term. And E19 and 20 show that we have a sustainable and predictable fund balance, which really helps Madison maintain our AAA rating. So, you know, we're not going to talk, as I talked about, about the budget line here, it's in here as, as a draft. But we'll certainly cover that in upcoming council meetings. But I wanted to get this estimate out here. Numbers can change ever so slightly and they really get finalized six months later. These 2020 numbers got finalized when the audit came. So we'll, but our, our numbers are always super close to within a couple thousand dollars. As a reminder, Deb and I were talking about this, it isn't that we sold $22,000 worth of electricity. We sold $22 million. I just chopped off the last eight zeros to make this chart tall. I'm not going to talk about this chart. It talks about the three entities that have jurisdiction over New Jersey electric markets. Happy to answer any questions if anybody calls or reaches out to me on that. We have two entities that support the Madison Electric Utility. They're entities that, of which we are members, along with nine other municipal electric utilities in town or in the state. And they're super helpful for making sure that we have legislation that passes, thanks to Governor Cody and Assemblywoman J C and Assemblyman Keon. We had a recent law that was passed and signed into law by Governor Murphy that allows us to charge a connection fee new homes. We have it, we had it for water, we had it for sewer. We're not allowed to charge it for electric. Now we can charge it for electric. It's basically a fee that, say there's a lot and it gets split into two homes. That new home would pay a connection fee because they have not invested in the system. It's a partial, small way for them to be invested in this $30 million system that Jim Mckenna and his staff maintain. There's general electric utility concerns from a financial standpoint, I should say, are the tremendous uncertainty in transmission and capacity costs. Know that there's a lot of things going on in that and how prices are determined. Again, there's some links that will be in this presentation that people can click on to see some information on that. I'm also happy to discuss, you know, at a future date or offline with anyone that's interested in finding out more about that. This is a slide that talks about how to calculate the capacity charge. I'm not going to go through it, but it's there for those who are, are into math and want to know how that works. It also is important to know for when we talk about battery backup, battery storage and things like that, and how, how we can pay for that asset through a reduced capacity charge. If it's okay with you, I'm going to kind of go through water, which I think goes pretty quickly. And then we can entertain questions at the end. Water utility, those are, that's from that my dad's annual report that he saved from 1944, these cool, look at, look at the way the water tanks looked on Midwood Terrace. Like in 1944, big rounds and pipes is what they're called, I think. Really interesting. Now we obviously have a different type of water tank that has water higher elevated. And interesting, and there's Tom DBS, this picture stretched, he's taller than that. So this is our water utility performance. And again, we have the numbers referenced here, just pointing out two things. The fund balance was kind of what we had estimated it to come in at. We have a decreasing fund balance here. This is at the balance at year end here, this number is decreasing, number 13. And the, and, and so the actual fund balance, the amount that we have in fund balance is decreasing. It's gone from 1.9 million to 1 million to $850,000. I think they should say 2022 here, I apologize. I think by 2023, when the new water rates are in, that will stabilize the fund balance here and allow us to continue to invest, you know, make major 500, 900, $900,000 investments in the capital that we need to maintain a safe water system. Other than that, fairly predictable performance in the water utility, one tenth of how much revenue we get in the electric utility, right? 22 million in the electric utility, 2.5 million in the water utility. This is a water utility rate comparison. I was giving to council before at the end of last year, there for those who are interested. And I am here to answer any questions.
A lot of information for those that are watching, that were watching at a later date, you'll have, you can go online to see all this and the, as you mentioned, you'll come back with the 2022 recommended budget, but right now we'll just for background, take questions or comments on the background. John?
Yeah, Jim, one question, please. You and I have talked about this a little bit before. But with the offshore wind power being, being generated and promoted for New Jersey. When, when you're talking about the transmission costs, do we have any idea what the impact is going to be of transmitting the electric power from the wind turbine cost to us?
That's a really good question, and we don't know how much. We just know right now it's going to be a lot. So as Councilman Hoover referenced, people may have read Governor Murphy's administration has advanced two major wind farms off the Jersey coast. We have to get that power through underground power lines connected to the New Jersey grid. Everyone will pay that. Every, every rate payer in the state will pay an increasing charge in that. Our, our transmission cost could double again, right, John? Then we talked about it being $500,000 in 2016 and they quadrupled to $2 million. We could easily go from $2 million to $4 million in, in cost, which is a significant cost, but that is all still to be determined. And there's a lot of moving parts at how that charge will be a dividend. But it is a huge uncertain, it's a huge uncertainty, and I thank you for bringing, mentioning.
Just a couple of quick questions and one thing to point out. Based on the electric contracts that, you know, cover our estimated need, is there, should we go out and buy contracts now before the rates get even higher?
There is a large prevailing thought to that. And so we're going to be looking into that, but I can't say for sure whether I subscribe to that or not. I'm very glad, and I want to thank Administrator Cody for continuing to push me and, and governing body for their support in buying some of the contracts out longer term. They will protect the borough's financial position and the strength of the electric utility well into the end of the decade.
And then just to follow up on what John said, what wind energy looks like it's, it is coming, and we're talking about solar energy. All the, the longer contracts that you just mentioned, how did those affect? Like, are we able to change if we decide to go more solar or wind or whatever?
So when we, when we make, when we make the contract purchases, there is a, a company that agrees to provide that energy to us. So anybody that is super into financial markets that's listening, there is something called an option. You get the option to buy oil at a set price. That's, that's a, or futures contract. That's not what we're buying. We're buying a forward contract. We're buying guaranteed energy delivery to us. We take the energy. If you were to buy an option for a stock, an option for pork bellies or for oil, you get the option to buy it, but you're never really taking delivery of it. You close out that. Our situation, the forward contract, we're taking energy delivery. However, that company's energy mix can change from the time we bought that contract until the time they actually deliver that contract. Peter Freed and I have been doing some look, looking at the various companies that provide energy to us. And we are seeing that they are moving to more renewable energy that they're delivering to us. So while our contract says they're just going to give us energy, the the breakdown of the type of energy that they're giving is kind of naturally organically shifting. And it's happening because of the top-down approach from the Murphy administration saying, hey, we want more renewable energy. So those companies are investing in more in renewable energy and then we're the beneficiary. So the entire state over time will will have a shift in more renewable energy. And Claire Woodcomb mentioned this at a recent comment that she made that it's, we call it kind of a top-down approach. It's coming to us. We don't have to aspire to it on our contracts because it's coming naturally through the contract. However, I talked about local solar generation for the solar carpets. I'm very keen on that. I've been working for like a year and a half with Peter Freed on that. And I'll be coming to council in the next few weeks with some recommendations on how we can generate renewable energy right here in town and use it right here in town. It will go to energize our homes. It won't go out of, of Madison. And that I think is, is an exciting addition.
Great, thank you.
Maureen and then Eric.
Jim, we've got a new construction connection agreement with JCP and L. So what's, what's the status of that? The upgrade of the substations? What's the, what's the status of the project? And when do you think it will start the work?
So that's in the development phase. When do I think we'll start the work? It's January. I'm going to say by the end of the year. So sorry to be so cryptic, but at this point, that's, that's, that's a best estimate. We are required to put some controls in our substations that will allow the regional transmission organization, WASI government entity called PJM. You've heard me talk about it. There's a slide on who PJM is, will allow them to better manage the electric consumption in Madison in an emergency situation. Texas had a massive collapse because they could not, they could not control a cascading event that occurred. And the end result was that they were out of power for weeks, right? It was, it was, it was a real problem. It with this substation, with the substation upgrades and with this interconnection agreement, which was mandated, we, we had to do it. We couldn't not do it. We would have been brought before the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission and gotten in big trouble if we didn't move that agreement forward. So we did. It will, that agreement will allow for certain gear here in our substation. So if there is a, say a massive generation plant shuts down because of something terrible and demand is way outstripping supply, that's when there's a cascading breakdown in the grid. In order to relieve that, the grid needs to be able to immediately shut off some consumption. So the grid, PJM, will have the option to be able to shut off some of our circuits in short order, as in within seconds without us being notified. Last time it happened was over a dozen years ago, when you had such an event in New Jersey, and we don't anticipate that. But in order to, you know, have a, have a, a short blackout in Madison for part of our town for 45 minutes is way better than having a two-week cascading blackout event that happened in Texas.
And Eric and then Rachel.
Thanks. Jim, can you talk a little bit more about the smart water meters? I know we did sort of a pilot program where we got Madison Common queued up for that. But, you know, obviously we're doing really well on the electric meter side. So how long do we think it's going to take to get the water meters to 95% or, you know?
Sure. So on the electric meters, you know, kudos to Jim Trimble, who personally went out and changed the seven meter. It did have his lineman help Jim Mckenna or Jim Trimble on two special days. They called it meter appreciation day, where all of the linemen have gone out and changed. Jim Trimble felt very recognized and appreciated on those days. So we were able to do it because it's outside, right? You go through the house, knock on the door, we're swapping out your meter, boom, boom, easy. Water meters are a whole different ballgame. When we did the commons, we had to schedule people to actually be home inside their house to exchange their water meter and install the module. I was surprised at how fast they could do it. They had staff that in the course of a day changed out 20 meters in a day. So they were doing three an hour. So it was really impressive. So what's, what's the holdup? The holdup is we now need to figure out the competitive process, whether it's going to be an RFP, which I hope or a competitive bid, and then we need to draw that document up, get it out on the street and, and bid the project and award it. My recommendation will probably be that that contract be a contract to do, let's say we have 4,000 left. I'd say it would be a contract to do 1,500 with an option to do another 1,500 rounds. Because I don't want to have a company come and that's terrible and give them all 4,000 meters to change. If they're bad, we'll toss them out. So, but in terms of timing, councilman range, I would say, I feel like putting, putting everything towards the end of the year, but hope that answered your question.
Yeah, fair enough. Thank you.
And Rachel.
Thanks, Mayor. Jim, I want to cycle back to two items that were already touched on. One of them is the generation mix for our bought-out power contracts. Can, can you speak a little bit about, generally speaking, I know you did an analysis to understand where the, what the generation source was. Can you talk with us publicly a little bit about, you know, whether the, the electrics, electricity that we bought out currently is being generated by fossil fuel burning plants, by, you know, non-carbon, carbon emitting sources?
Back to the contract chart. So we have this, the end of this year, we're on, we're actually 2022. So for the next four months, we're still on a NextEra contract. All of our contracts are with NextEra. NextEra has a significant amount of solar and wind. Each, we, we have contracts with Exelon, with NextEra, with BP, with PSENG. We have the ability to do contracts with Detroit Edison and some other providers, but they just, when we go out to bid, they put off. Exelon has a tremendous amount of nuclear energy and New Jersey in general has a tremendous amount of nuclear energy, much more than other states. New Jersey is growing in both solar and renewable as well. However, there is still carbon producing generation out there. I don't have the exact breakdown of what NextEra is or what PSENG or BP is, but as Peter and I have been tracking it, all the generation continues to be slowly moving away from the coal plants and, or the natural gas plants and take more to to non-carbon producing. And I, and I include nuclear in, in that non-carbon producing side. So I expand the definition of, I say renewable and non-carbon producing. But I don't have the specific details on that.
Okay. And then the other question is, I wanted to link something Maureen mentioned about our interconnection agreement back to our capacity bill. And you have a slide that shows that we have a $2.3 million capacity bill. And that's what we pay in order to have the power we need on the hottest days of the year, when everyone turns on their air conditioner at 4:00 PM or whatever the case is. Can you elaborate a little bit on how the borough might be able to manage our, our peak demand times relative to the interconnection agreement upgrades that we are making in any case?
So, great question. The transmission and capacity costs. Screen again and go back to, to that particular chart. So I'm not going to go to the one that talks specifically about how it's calculated, but on this show, line E7 and E8. So we're talking about what cost us in 2021, four and a half million dollars. Those costs are completely driven by the five hottest days of the year. And if we can reduce and driven by our, our consumption, the bad, our master meter in Madison, how much electricity we as a town consume on those five hottest hours on non-coincidence, non-coincidence hours. So, uh, if we have a battery and South River is in the process of another municipal electric utilities in the process of installing a battery, trying to get one installed. And if we would install a battery that could discharge 10 megawatts, uh, 10 megawatt hours of energy for a three hour period, we would charge that battery at night. And then on one of the hot, and on the hotter days of the year, we would discharge that battery. It would look like, um, our consumption to the grid, to PJM dropped from 42 megawatt, megawatts in an hour to 32 megawatts in an hour. And that drop of 25% will result in a drop of 25% of our transmission and capacity costs. So 25% of 4.5 million dollars is a million dollars. So, um, we sit here and say, well, if we had 10 megawatts of, of generation or battery backup, that we were able to dispatch 10 megawatts of battery would be a lot. But if we had a 10 megawatts of generation and backup battery that we could dispatch, we would save a million dollars a year. And so we can use that million dollar savings to, to install those assets. I will, I will say that I am an advocate for installing a generation unit that would be a high efficiency, natural gas generation unit that would only be used 100 hours in a year, um, unless there was an emergency. If we had a super storm, Sandy, we could use it to energize our entire downtown and give us that reliability and safety that we need. But, um, a, a, a natural gas generator that could also just by running it 100 hours in the year could pay for itself in, you know, not too many years. And then we would have that continued savings after it paid for itself. And what's to me equally as important is the public safety aspect of it. As elected officials and as administration CFO, our goal is always to, to manage costs, right? As Deb talked about, voting on the budget is the most important thing. But really the most important thing is public safety. We've seen that with the pandemic. We've seen that with, um, other situations. And I think when, um, you have, uh, the possibility of long-term outages to be able to take that generator and, um, through, uh, as Jimmy said, tie points, um, manually tie point and energize the entire downtown. Even if all of Madison, the rest of Madison, residential parts of town were out for a day or two or three or five, 10, we'd be in such better shape and we'd be in a much more safer situation for public safety. If we could, um, have that generator to do that. So they'll be, I, I'm happy to make my case. To, at, at any point in time, I don't want to take any more time here, but I do think it's really important for us to have that conversation with all the stakeholders.
The meters are fully operational. We have some history. We may be able to come up with a, um, rate structure that also, you know, people may run their air conditioning still during the day, but they could do other things such as charge your vehicles off hours and have a better rate. So, um, that would be another thing that can help us.
Yeah. The, you know, if we can get the right billing software set up and the right rate structure set up exactly mayor, same with electric vehicles, right? Someone comes home at four o'clock and plugs their electric vehicle and that's going to take a lot of energy. But if we had a situation where they, their charger could be deferred the charge to eight o'clock at night, we could give them better, better rates for their electric vehicle and that's all.
All right. Any other questions or comments? A lot of information and, um, so, uh, more to come at our, at our next couple of meetings on the budget. Thank you, Jim, and thank you for, uh, our other presenters. Just a quick check before we go to the next agenda item. We are at 10:20. We may switch the 11 o'clock hour tonight. Anyone need a stretch break or are we all okay? Is that a?
Yes, I need, I need a minute.
Okay. So we will, it is 10:22 right now. We'll, uh, come back in less than five minutes. So at 10:27 at the latest, but once we have everyone, uh, back, back here, we will reconvene. All right. Just waiting for Maureen and then we will reconvene.
So this is Maureen. But my, my video is not working, but I'm here.
All right. You are here. So we are all. Let the record reflect, we reconvened with all members present and, uh, Maureen on audio. And we will move on to medical cannabis and, uh, there's Maureen. All right. Very good. Uh, Deb and Eric.
All right. I'll go ahead and share. Just give me one second. Okay, Deb, I'll, I'll let you take it away.
Thanks. Um, medical cannabis in consideration for Madison, just some key moments. So people are aware in 2010, that's actually when medical cannabis was legal, uh, was legalized through the compassionate use medical marijuana act. And you can see it kind of increased 2017 and 2019. In 2020, the ballot referendum for recreational use passed by 67.63% of voters in Madison, which was higher than the state approval rate. In 2021, last fall, we passed ordinance 30, uh, opting out of the recreational market and banning recreational cannabis business activities. So medical cannabis is highly legally, legal and highly regulated. It can be prescribed for a range of medical conditions. You must be registered with the state and provide documentation. Your doctor must also be registered and meet strict requirements to be allowed to do prescriptions. Dispensaries miss, Eric, you should have talked. I can't talk.
I'll take over the next slide.
Must be licensed by the state and comply with annual renewal regulations and inspections as well as any local regulations imposed. And if you want, once this is posted tomorrow, there's that link takes you to the state department of health website that has more information and the FAQ for medical cannabis.
Great. So the, the question that, you know, bears, bears asking is, why are we talking about, uh, potential medical cannabis dispensaries now? Right? Um, as Deb mentioned, we do have the ordinance, uh, from last year, but that only addresses recreational dispensaries, um, and associated businesses. There are some other categories of businesses, not just dispensaries, but that's strictly on, um, the recreational side of things. That particular ordinance is silent on medical dispensaries and therefore right now we have no local regulations in place. In late 2021, uh, after more than two years, an applicant from the 2019 medical license round was approved by the New Jersey Cannabis Regulatory Commission and has expressed a desire to operate in Madison at a location to be determined. They haven't submitted anything, uh, zoning wise or anything to, to Madison. And they could have been shopping that to multiple towns. So, um, you know, that's sort of still up in the air. But what we do have at this point is an opportunity to establish those appropriate local processes, fees and regulations, um, to make that sort of business, if we're interested, fit for Madison and appropriate for, for Madison. So what are some of those local regulations that we can consider? Obviously there are a lot of guidelines already in place at the state level that regulate how medical dispensaries have to conduct their business. And, you know, reporting and oversight at the state level. However, there are things that we can consider here at the municipal level. Obviously land use issues. Restricting to specific zones or areas within zones. Consider imposing, uh, distance limits or buffers from schools, parks, places of worship, et cetera. And we've seen those in, in other ordinances, um, parking or traffic impacts. And, you know, all the things that go into, uh, planning and zoning board application, right? Further, a cap, if any, on the number of medical dispensaries that we would permit in Madison, given our size and population, hours of operation, odor mitigation, uh, efforts to minimize loitering or banning onsite consumption and minimizing other nuisances. What would our annual licensing authority be? Fees associated with that and inspections. Already they have an obligation to submit, uh, detailed security plans. But that could also be in partnership with our local law enforcement as well. Requiring community benefits, um, or, you know, prohibiting co-location with a business that already has a liquor license, um, or some other business activity going on. That's not an exhaustive list, but, um, that's something, uh, you know, that we can consider.
Eric, I'm going to jump in before you switch slides on that community benefits. Because when I heard that, I was like, what do you mean? What does that mean? It's things like training for police officers or in, uh, educational, uh, presentation. So it's, it's, they would be required to produce something that would help the, help the betterment of Madison to be able to have the dispensary in Madison.
Right. Um, and as far as the, the fees go, there's a lot of structures, um, that could be considered there. Madison could consider, uh, you know, essentially an excise tax or, uh, other such thing of, of the 2% of the, of the fees collected by the dispensary. You could also just limit it to, uh, particular licensing fees, uh, and, and do it that way. So there's, there's a lot of ways we could structure these sorts of things. And these are all things to consider as we continue this conversation. Anything else, Deb?
Nope. I think that covers that slide.
Okay. So, so the, the future next steps here, right? It's important, uh, that we recognize that as we begin sort of this process and as, as with any kind of change to land use, uh, regulations, there'll be multiple opportunities for public comment and participation. Your first one coming up in a few minutes, I think. But the borough planner and our attorneys will coordinate and draft an ordinance for borough councils consideration that touches upon, uh, some of the, the things we've just outlined. That ordinance will be introduced by council and then referred to the planning board. Planning board will then review, conduct, uh, further public hearings and, and make recommendations back to the council. And of course there'll be a final public hearing and the ordinance potentially adopted by council. So we are in the very early days of this planning process. But what we want to make sure that we're doing is establishing these local regulations in a timely way that we don't get, you know, that we're in the driver's seat and that we don't get snuck up upon, before it's too late. So that's, that's sort of the process as it stands now and kind of the outline of where we're going. But, um, happy to answer any questions or comments from, from other council members.
Get, get a quick overview. We have, um, you know, we were silent on, uh, medical marijuana. This is a highly regulated, uh, uh, system. We would be putting, i- if the council, uh, you know, tonight, if, um, council wants to, we would take a vote to just kind of give the go ahead and the, start the process of developing ordinances. And, but again, zoning would be, um, considered as, uh, uh, only in the business, uh, business districts, um, or, or CC district, things like that. Uh, distance from, uh, schools and so on. So all that would be incorporated if the, um, council decides to move forward in this direction. Bob, I think I saw your hand up and.
You know, I was an EMS first responder for 25 years. And I clearly have seen instances where this would have helped people. There's no question about the medical benefits of marijuana. But a few items I guess came up on those slides and we don't have to go into details about them now, but the, the kind of, I guess maybe raised some concerns or questions in my mind about security procedures. I mean, if this is something prescribed by a doctor, somewhat similar to, let's say, if you go to Madison pharmacy to get medicine. I don't know why they would need specific security procedures for it. Then this whole issue of, um, you know, mitigating the odor. You know, I guess the concern there is if somebody goes into the store and buys it, they could smoke it on the street and residents nearby walking around could smell. I don't know enough about it, but these are just a few things that popped up in my mind. Um, and there were a few others. I mean, co-locating with a, uh, place with a liquor license. Well, to me, it's kind of like a drugstore wouldn't sell liquor. So why is this specific for medical marijuana? I mean, these are things which I think we need to really get into before we proceed any further.
I, I, I think as a, yeah. Yeah. And I think that would all, uh, as the ordinance gets developed, I think the, uh, the odor is probably more related to cultivation or processing as opposed to, uh, a dispensary. I, it would, it would be my guess.
I don't know. That's why I'm asking. I just don't know.
That is the case, Bob. It's, it's, or both Bobs. It, it's, it is more for that. A dispensary, there shouldn't be any odor because they're not growing anything. And there will be rules, just like there's rules for no smoking, no vaping. It'll encompass, um, you know, no marijuana use as well. So medical or otherwise.
Part of the security issue is regretfully, since the federal government has not recognized the value of, uh, medical marijuana or, or, um, the fact, the trend towards recreational marijuana is it tends to be a cash business because banks covered by FDIC will not handle, um, the credit card transaction.
Right. And, and some of these, obviously there are model ordinances out there and there's a lot of, uh, work that the, uh, New Jersey Cannabis Regulatory Commission has already done to sort of lay the groundwork. And, and I think the other thing to consider and to be clear, this isn't about, um, recreational marijuana, dispensaries, but I think as we consider our regulations for medical, we may want to think about some future proofing. So when and if we have that conversation down the road, we don't have to change 10 things. And again, that's not part of this conversation, but I think we should always be kind of thinking about future proofing our conversations to allow other things to happen or not, depending on, on where we want to go. So I think some of those things may be less, um, of a consideration on, on the medical side. But maybe things that we just want to have in the back of our minds for that other conversation, when and if it happens. But this is strictly about, you know, this is strictly about setting regulations for, um, medical cannabis.
And that's exactly why I want to get into it a bit more because, um, I'm not, I'm not that I'm concerned. Like I said, I understand the need for. I mean, I've seen where many cancer patients would have benefited tremendously. But there's a lot of details to this that, that slide presentation raised in my mind. And then you just brought up the whole issue of recreational. You know, would this open the door? And I don't mean that in a negative way for recreational. Or could somebody go in there and buy it under the pretense of medical and then use it for recreational purposes? So these are the things that I, I, I personally would want to know about first.
Without, without rescinding the current ordinance, they would not be able to in Madison switch over from medical to recreation.
And just real quick on the low, co-locating of liquor license. It's so that, you know, and I'm going to use Eric as an example. He owns a business. He can't. It's so that, you know, and I'm going to use Eric as the example. He owns a business. He can't collaborate with me. I own the liquor store. He owns the medical marijuana or or the recreational. And we're in the same building owned by, you know, and we're co-owners of the whole thing. If a if one were to end up next to a liquor store, that's not what we're talking about. It's that they're owned. And I think that it's just to protect people going from one to the other. Um, you know, but no, I agree. This needs more discussion, but that's why we're starting now. Um, you know, this won't be the last discussion we have on medical. Um, and then hopefully later down the road, we will at least have a discussion on recreational. So appreciate the questions, though.
Yeah, I just hope that something can be done with medical. It's like I said, a lot of people could use it. It'd benefit a lot of people.
Uh, other comments or questions? Well, then what I would like to do right now is entertain a motion, and uh to be clear, this is not a motion approving medical marijuana, but a a motion to start moving in that direction, that we uh start uh at request the planning board to start looking at the zoning. We would request our attorneys to start putting together and and as been mentioned, there are uh model ordinances and templates out there already and uh municipalities have.
We drafted, I drafted one for Summit, so I can work from that one.
Very good.
Almost so moved, Bob.
All right, so I've got a motion and a second.
Thanks, John. I'll second.
And uh, can I have a uh any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Liz, you're muted.
Someone keeps unmuting me. Okay, Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Cohen?
Yes.
Hurlick?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mr. Range?
Yes.
All right, so Matthew, you've got your uh marching orders.
We'll send you over sample ordinance.
Thank you.
Thanks, Matt.
All right, let's uh we move uh now on to um ordinances for hearing. Will the clerk please read the statement?
The ordinances scheduled for hearing were introduced by title and passed on the first reading at the regular meeting of the council held on January the 10th, 2022. All were posted and filed according to law, and copies were made available to the general public requesting same.
I call up the ordinances for a second reading. Ask the clerk to read said ordinance by title, ordinance 1 dash 2022.
Ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating $840,000 from the General Capital Improvement Fund for the 2022 road reconstruction projects, related work and miscellaneous projects.
In hearing, anyone in the public wishing to comment, please raise your hand now. Seeing none, I close the hearing.
Mayor, I move ordinance 1 dash 2022.
Second.
Any council discussion? Uh, Rachel?
I'll I'll just mention briefly that the um this ordinance is focused on priority reconstruction projects, uh including um roadwork for Howard Boulevard. I'm sorry, that was a mistake last time, too. It's not Howard Boulevard. Um, it is Howard Boulevard, our Boulevard, uh Norman Circle and Shady Lawn Drive, um just to highlight um where some of this work is incidentally take place.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Cohen?
Yes.
Ms. Hurlick?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mr. Range?
Yes.
I declare ordinance 1 dash 2022 adopted and finally passed and has the clerk to publish notice there of newspaper and file the ordinance according to the law. Ordinance 2 dash 2022.
Ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating $645,000 from the General Capital Improvement Fund for the 2022 milling and overlay projects.
I open the hearing. I open the hearing for ordinance 2. Anyone wishing to comment in the public, please raise your hand. Seeing none, I close the hearing.
Mayor, I move ordinance 2 dash 2022.
Second.
Any council discussion? Yes, Rachel, thank you.
Oh, I'll just do the same thing and highlight that this is no overlay for um streets including Union Hill Road, LEAV, L-E-E-A-V, and LEAV, L-E-I-G-H-F, as well as Surrey Lane, Elm Street, Wilmer Street and Dwyer Street.
Thank you. I'm not too sure who would name the way back when in two different Lee streets, but that's what we have. And uh, just for the record, it is Howard Street and not Howard Boulevard, so.
Thank you.
Yep. Um, any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Cohen?
Yes.
Ms. Hurlick?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mr. Range?
Yes.
I declare ordinance 2 dash 2022 adopted and finally passed and ask the clerk to publish notice there of newspaper and file the ordinance according to the law. And now we're on to invitation for uh for comment from the public, and I apologize for this late hour where we are uh ho- home by now, but uh it was a very busy agenda and a a lot accomplished. But please, if you wish to comment, uh raise your hand. We already have one hand raised. Try to keep your comments to three minutes, but uh we will uh give you a one-minute grace and stop you at four. When you are recognized, uh please uh come on, state state your name and the town you live in, and then uh you may start your comments. And we'll bring up Joan.
Hello, my name is Dr. Joan Malouf, and I'm coming to you this evening from Berlin, Maryland, where I live. And I'm here to say a few words in favor of preservation of the Drew Forest. I'm the founder and director of an organization called the Old Growth Forest Network, and we speak out for forest preservation across the country. And we recognize the re- the Drew Forest as a very important forest that is threatened. And I am asking that the um town of Madison does everything in their power to keep that forest in. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments and uh reaching out. And now we'll bring up Tyler Barth.
Uh, hang on. Yes, uh, hi, Tyler Barth of Randolph. Um, I just want some clarification. Um, what streets are, do the two ordinances uh apply to?
Um, what what we do is just ask your questions, and then when you're done with your comments, we'll answer them so we don't take away from your time.
Uh, no, that's my only question. What streets do uh?
Okay. Uh, I don't have it in front of me, so I will uh have Rachel go through it again, again, starting with reconstruction, following up with the uh mill and overlay.
Okay, I'm gonna um get it right this time. It's Howard Street, Norman Circle, Shady Lawn Drive uh are the three reconstruction projects. And for mill and overlay, which is focused on the asphalt resurfacing, we have Union Union Hill Road, LEAV, which is L-E-E-A-V, as well as LEAV, L-E-I-G-H-F, Surrey Lane, Elm Street, Wilmer Street and Dwyer Street. So the second list is ordinance 2, and the list I started with is ordinance 1.
Thank you very much for filling in on that. All right, and we now go on to Chris Hepburn.
Sorry, unmute. Hi, Christine Hepburn, um Hardwick, New Jersey. I appreciate your listening to me again tonight. I'll be brief. I just want to un- to underscore how exciting it is that Joan Malouf from Maryland is interested enough in the future of the Drew Forest to attend this very, very long meeting. Uh, she may not be a household name. Maybe she is, but I'm suspecting she's not. Um, so I just want to to state that she's a prominent ecologist and is very beloved by readers interested in forests. At the risk of sounding like a groupie, and well, I probably am a groupie, I have read all of her books. I have given her book Teaching the Trees as a gift to many people. It's a very readable collection of essays that is um full of science, but also magic. Uh, I really would like to give her gift, her as a gift, her book, her very important book, Nature's Temples, The Complex World of Old Growth Forests. Uh, but I have to wait for the next edition because right now you can only get used copies uh for $89.50 on um Amazon. Uh, Joan Malouf's advocacy advocacy for forests is eloquent, amazingly knowledgeable. Uh, and so I'm just really grateful that Drew Forest is on her radar and her organization's radar. Um, please go to the Old Growth Forest Network if you want to know more. Uh, my hope, and I don't think it's unreasonable, is that Joan is just the first of other nationally known ecologists who will care about the fate of the Drew Forest. I know I don't have to convince you, but I am trying to speak to a broader audience. And again, I thank all of you for for your past, current and future efforts to save the Drew Forest. Thanks.
Thank you, Christine, and thank you for the additional background. I will certainly be uh looking up uh Joan Malouf uh tomorrow. And that will call up Claire.
Claire doesn't want to allow you to talk.
Claire, we're.
There you go.
Okay. Whoop. Okay, I think we got you now.
Okay, I just wanted to concur with Christine that I'm a Joan Malouf groupie, and I just, I've read as many books of hers as the Madison Library has. And uh Teaching the Trees is just transformative. I uh I've just, you know, I I walk around talking about things she says, and we've used quotes from her and Save the Drew Forest uh social media. Um, she's she's Bridget Daly just sent me a uh link to a webinar that she gave at uh some group, I don't know, Native Plant Society. Um, so I'm thrilled that she's called in, and the other thing I have to say that's super important is somebody already texted me to say how excited they were that styrofoam recycling is happening at the DPW. So thanks. I'm sorry it's so late, but I couldn't resist.
Thank you, Claire. And then for for our record, that was uh Claire Whitcomb of Madison, and uh thank you for uh uh additional recognition of the work of uh Joan Malouf and the uh work of our uh DPW leadership in styrofoam recycling. Anyone else wishing to be heard, please raise your hand now. Seeing none, I close this part of the meeting.
Mayor, I'm wondering if you might want to mention that at the start of the meeting, we had um 31 attendees altogether and 15 uh non-panelists. I know we were in the habit of mentioning how many people were attending previously. I just made a note of it. I thought I'd mention that.
I I appreciate that because um in this virtual world, it's it is good to recognize that um our um attendees can't see how many people. Oh, thank you. And uh we now move on to introduction of ordinances. Will the clerk please read the statement?
Ordinance is scheduled for first reading. Have a hearing date set for February the 14th, 2022. Will be published in the Madison Eagle Post on the bulletin board and made available to members of the public requesting copies.
I call up ordinance 3 dash 2022 for first reading. Ask the borough clerk to read said warrant by title.
Ordinance 3, 2022, ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating $80,000 from the General Capital Improvement Fund for the purchase of a handicapped exterior door replacement and accessory.
And uh, yep.
I'll move ordinance 3 dash 2022.
I'll second.
All right, and this uh we um Hurricane Ida took out our uh handicapped accessible doors. So right now it has no door assist. It is a very heavy door, and it is at our barrier-free entrance, so that needs to be taken care of. And some other improvements uh that need to be done at at that location. Things related to Harley dot. Any other comment, discussion? Well, uh, yes, Rachel.
I'll just mention that I'm aware that we're pursuing um through our insurance fund a reimbursement through, you know, for uh damage because of the hurricane through FEMA, so hopefully the borough will see some um restitution for the replacement of this equipment.
Thank you. Any o- other discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Cohen?
Yes.
Ms. Hurlick?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mr. Range?
Yes.
All right, now we move on to consent agenda resolutions. Will the clerk please read the statement?
Consent agenda resolutions will be enacted with a single motion. Any resolution requiring expenditure is supported by a certification of availability of funds. Any resolution requiring discussion will be removed from the consent agenda. All resolutions will be reflected in full in the minutes.
Mayor, I move Resolution R 48 dash 2022 through R 61 dash 2022.
Second.
Any uh discussion or any that need to be pulled separately? Uh, yes, Rachel.
I just want to highlight uh Resolution R dash 2022, which is authorizing an application to the New Jersey Clean Energy Program. Uh, the Board of Public Utilities has created a grant program that uh communities like ours can apply to for a grant in creating a community energy plan, and this is um a follow-on to the climate action initiative that the borough took last week. I just wanted the council and public to know that the uh we're moving ahead quickly to start to take advantage of the resources that are out there, and this grant is the first step in that process.
Thank you very much. Any other comments, discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Cohen?
Yes.
Ms. Hurlick?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mr. Range?
Yes.
Late hour, there is no unfinished business, which is good. We're very productive. Uh, so approval of vouchers. Will the clerk please read the voucher titles?
Yes, for the current fund, $9,777,104.34. For the General Capital Fund, $103,145.37. For the Electric Operating Fund, $1,120,518.29. For the Electric Capital Fund, $175,170.70. The Water Operating Fund, $39,948.28. Water Capital Fund, $67,142 even. For the Trust, $74,356.4 cents. The total is $11,350, excuse me, $11,357,315.2 cents.
Have motion for the vouchers.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion, questions? Yes, uh, Rachel?
I have a comment that I will abstain from um approving the bill list because uh I am actually um a recipient of a partial reimbursement for my sidewalk replacement project. Last year, the council voted to um enhance the public-private partnership wherein the borough reimburses residents for replacing their sidewalk in the right-of-way. Uh, having just done that, since I'm actually on the bill list, I won't vote to um pay myself. So I'm going to abstain from voting for the vouchers.
Thank you. Thanks for highlighting the program, too. Any other quick comments? Roll call vote, please.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Cohen?
Yes.
Ms. Hurlick?
I abstain.
Thank you. Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mr. Range?
Yes.
Hey, under new business, I would like to make the following appointment, requesting council confirmation. And this was a, uh, we had a mix-up with uh terms, and so Brian Monahan has been serving on the Shade Tree Management Board and should have been reappointed, so we are appointing Brian Monahan, alternate one to five-year term through December 31st, 26th. Have a motion?
So moved.
Uh, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous? And can I have a motion for adjournment?
Mayor, I move we adjourn the meeting.
All in favor?
Aye.
And and for the record, the bylaws say we have to uh vote to extend S 11, and we just made it, so thank you all for a long night, and th- thank you for the people that are still here in attendance. Be well.
Good night, everybody.
Good night.
Good night, everybody.